Athena, Amherst Media is ready. Are you recording?
Recording in progress.
Okay. Good evening. It's September 8th, 2025. This is the first of two meetings of the Amherst Town Council this evening. Both will be using the same Zoom link for those attending virtually. Chapter two of the Acts of 2025 Extended Through June 30th, 2027, provide us with the ability for public bodies to meet in a fully remote or hybrid manner. This law allows us to continue holding meetings remotely without a quorum of the council physically present at the meeting location. This meeting is accessible by Zoom, by phone, and as a live broadcast on Amherst Media Channel 9, and live stream. I want to point out, however, there are 11 counselors in the room tonight, and all are present, including those on Zoom. Please be advised that this meeting is being held in person and that the remote access option is provided as a courtesy only. In the event of technology issues with the remote connection, the meeting will continue in person as scheduled, as long as there is a quorum of the council in the room or available by technological means to continue the meeting. Given that we have a quorum of the council present, although I would like to point out that for a public forum, the quorum does not need to be present. I'm calling the September 8th Public Forum to order at 8:32. I'll call upon each counselor by name as they have indicated they'd like to be addressed. At that time, please unmute your mic and say present, and this will indicate that we can hear you and you can hear us. Please remember to mute your mic after saying present. Pat DeAngelis?
Present.
Anna Devlin-Gothier?
Present.
Counselor Ette?
Present.
Lynn Griesmer is present. Counselor Hanke?
Present.
Bob Hegner?
Present.
Counselor Lord?
Present.
Pam Rooney?
Here.
Counselor Ryan?
Present.
Kathy Shane?
I'm here.
Andy Steinberg?
Present.
Jennifer Taub?
Here.
Counselor Walker?
Present.
There's no chat room for this meeting. If counselors have technical issues, please make sure Athena and I become aware of that. And please make sure you use the raised hand button. There will be one public comment period during this public forum. Kathy Shane is Chair of the Finance Committee. Please call the Finance Committee to order and determine for those members that are here if they can hear and be heard. Call the Finance Committee to order, and the counselors who are on the committee have all indicated they can hear. That's Mandy, Alicia, Andy, and who did I miss? Bob, thanks, Bob. And I call on one additional resident member, Tom Porter, who's here tonight. The others have notified me they won't be able to attend. Tom, can you hear us? Thank you. I'm pausing for a moment to make sure that those people in the room and on Zoom are aware that there will be four public comment periods tonight. One is for this public forum. There'll be one each for the hearings scheduled at the beginning of our regular town council meeting, and then the general public comment period. Please make sure that you are signed up for the correct one with Athena if you're in the room, and make sure that you raise your hand for only those that you care to speak about when we get to public comment. This public forum is called to provide the public with an opportunity to speak about the following financial council order. Amy Russeki, who is on Zoom with us this evening, is the Assistant Superintendent of Operations for the Department of Public Works. She will make a very brief statement, and in the meantime, we ask that the clerk of the town council put the financial order up on the screen. Amy, please proceed.
Hi. Yeah, thank you for having me. Sorry, remind me, we're starting with the wastewater treatment plan assessment?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, thank you. I hadn't seen it pop up on the screen yet. Excellent. Yeah, I think a couple of you counselors and maybe some of the folks from the Finance Committee, I haven't met you guys before, so just, like Lynn said, I'm the Assistant Superintendent of Public Works, so I work directly under Guilford-Mooring. And today, yeah, we're talking about the wastewater treatment facility assessment, which it's basically a large comprehensive evaluation of our wastewater treatment facility that needs to get done. The big components of it are going to be, you know, to upgrade our facility, which is nearly 50 years old. Also, to be prioritizing projects, grouping projects together, giving us alternative analysis, so not just looking at how do we replace this pump with one that is, you know, the same size, but looking at, do we need to do things slightly different with our process, given how our permit has changed over years? And one of the things that actually adds to the cost of this is also having to follow, there's a certain guideline on how you do this sort of a facility assessment, which if you follow all those guidelines, it makes you eligible for grants such as the SRF funding, which is what we got for the Centennial Water Treatment Facility, which gives us a lower interest rate and also gives us some principal forgiveness on the grant. And so, following a certain process and checking certain boxes throughout this entire process is going to make us eligible for having some potential funding sources for for some of the upgrades that I'm sure are going to be recommended coming out of this assessment, so.
Thank you. We will hear from the Finance Committee on their recommendation when we get to the actual meeting. Meantime, the floor is open for public comment. Is there anybody in the audience in the town room or in Zoom that would like to make public comment? I want to point out that the floor will be open for seven minutes because the charter requires that we leave the floor open for as many minutes for the council as we do for anybody else. Hilda Greenbaum, please enter the room, state your name, and please proceed with your comment. This is public comment regarding the wastewater treatment plant.
Yes, I live at 298 Montague Road, and I just have a question that I've been trying to find the answer to, but with the new report that's come in that's telling us that we need to build 700 or more housing units in this town, I would like to know, and I know you can't give me the answer, but sometime I would like to know what is the capacity of the sewer treatment plant, and will we find out from this proposed grant or money that you're asking for, what the actual capacity is, and will the grant cover upgrading if we need to increase the capacity? And thank you for listening to my question.
Thank you for joining us, Hilda. I'm going to turn to Amy and see whether you want to field that question now or get back to someone later.
I can at least field a little bit of it to just say, you know, without having all the numbers in front of me. So our facility right now, it sees on average three and a half to four million gallons a day. It was actually initially designed as a regional facility, so it was designed for over seven million gallons a day. So there is additional capacity, or there's a potential for additional capacity at the facility. You know, that being said, now that it's 50 years old, if we were seeing seven million gallons a day, it would be a little more challenging just because some of the, it's not operating quite as efficiently, and a lot of times we have to take different things offline in order to fix the problem. So, yeah, we're hopeful that the plan will help us to make sure that we're able to very comfortably be at seven MGD. And also, again, like some of those projects might be aimed towards making sure that we have all the systems in place to be at that seven.
Hilda, you have your hand up again. Would you like to ask another question?
I would just be curious, what's a population that can be served by those numbers that you gave? In quantity, how does that relate to people?
Amy, do you want to go ahead?
I would say that that's one I don't, off the top of my head, it's hard to really translate number of people because certainly industries and businesses have different impacts. So that one's a little harder to quantify.
Okay. Dave Zomack, who's the Assistant Town Manager, is here tonight. Dave, you have your hand up. Please go ahead.
Sure, no, just to add to what Amy said before, I'm not going to wade into the question about population. I think that's one we could look into in the future. It's a good question. But just to build on what Amy was saying, this study is really focused on the wastewater treatment plant. It's not focused on the rest of the system, so to Hilda's question, there are other questions to be answered relative to the entire wastewater system throughout town, i.e. pump stations and aging infrastructure. And so, that's also part of the equation for the future is some of our lines are extremely old, there's some dead ends, there's some pinch points. So, you know, we need to look at that moving forward as well. So it's a comprehensive job that DPW does, and our wastewater team is a wonderful group, so that's part of the equation for later, but this is mainly focused on the treatment plant.
There are just a couple statistics that we do know. About 5% of the households in Amherst are not connected to the sewer system. They are on septic systems. Those are mostly up in northeast Amherst. And in addition to that, all of the higher ed institutions are connected and pay us for that service. So when you look at our population count, which is about 39 million people, when all of the students are here, about 5% of that or less, frankly, because they're single-family homes mostly, are connected to the sewer system. Are there any other questions or comments from the people on Zoom? We're going to leave the forum open till 6:44. Kathy, would you please determine whether the Finance Committee has any comments in regard to changing their vote?
Lynn, can I offer a few supplemental comments before I ask for that?
Except, you know, that we are going to actually have comments during our regular meeting. We have comments during our regular meeting from counselors.
Okay, fine. So at this point, would anyone on the Finance Committee like to change their vote? As you saw in the report, the vote recommending support of this was unanimous.
Okay.
Not seeing anyone.
Seeing none. Would you please move to adjourn the Finance Committee, me?
Then I make a motion to adjourn the Finance Committee.
Second.
And do I need to call on all the counselors who are on it as well?
I'll be, yes, you do, technically.
Okay. All right, then I will call on each member of the Finance Committee on the motion to adjourn. Mandy?
Aye.
Andy?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Alicia?
Aye.
Kathy, a yes, and Tom?
I concur.
Thank you. We are adjourned.
Okay, I move to adjourn the public forum and seek a second from a council member.
Second.
Thank you. I'll move to the roll call. Pat DeAngelis?
Aye.
Anna Devlin-Gothier?
Aye.
Counselor Ette?
Aye.
Lynn Griesmer is an aye. Counselor Hanke?
Aye.
Bob Hegner?
Aye.
Counselor Lord?
Aye.
Pam Rooney?
Yes.
Counselor Ryan?
Aye.
Kathy Shane? Yes, Andy Steinberg?
Aye.
Jennifer Taub?
Yes.
Counselor Walker? The public forum is adjourned. Given that it's 6:45, which is the time for which we posted our regular meeting, we're going to proceed on to our regular meeting. I've already basically outlined several things about our meeting, and we've taken rolls, so unless a counselor feels I need to take roll again, I'm going to not do that. Okay. Let me just mention, however, that we still have three more public comment periods. Two associated with each of the hearings, or one associated with each of the two hearings, and then general public comment. We're moving on to announcements, and let me just mention that on September 15th, the council will meet. We will start at 6:30. We will have a public forum on the master plan as required by the charter, and a regular town council meeting. There's committee meetings for every one of the town council committees between now and September 16th, and, I'm sorry, and September 18th. I do want to mention that we have the block party coming up on September 18th from 5:00 to 9:00 in downtown, where we block off part of Pleasant Street, and we have Crest Day on Sunday, September 21st, at noon to 4:00 at Mill River. We're going to move on to the hearings. We have two. The first is an Eversource petition for pole relocation and placement at University Drive and Amity Street intersection. I'm going to ask Ryan Morse to come forward, please, to the podium, and we're going to deal with this hearing, then we have to close it, and then we'll go to the next hearing. So.
Point of order, and I hate to do this, the hearing was noticed for 6:50.
Whoops. Okay, we're going to wait then, because the hearing was not listed until 6:50. Thank you. I have that on my sheet, and I didn't check the time. I'm sorry. We cannot move until 7:50 on the hearing. We could, however, move on to the consent agenda. Sorry. The consent agenda, I'm going to read the items. If you would like to remove an item, please let me know. I'm going to read this as a motion to move the following items in the printed motions thereunder and approve those items as a single unit. Waiver of Town Council Rules or Procedure Rule 8.6 for Agenda Item 9A. 9A, 1 to 3, and 9A, actually it's 4. Approval of the following Town Manager Appointments, Commission for Persons with Disabilities, Community Preservation Act Committee, Public Arts Commission, and Extension of the Temporary Planning Director Appointment. 11A, Approval of the Following Meeting Minutes, August 18, 2025, Regular Meeting Minutes. Is there a second? Oh, is there anybody that wants anything removed? Seeing none, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. We're going to move to a vote. Anna Devlin-Gothier?
Aye.
Counselor Ette?
Aye.
Lynn Griesmer is an aye. Counselor Hanke?
Aye.
Bob Hegner?
Aye.
Counselor Lord?
Aye.
Pam Rooney?
Yes.
Counselor Ryan?
Aye.
Kathy Shane?
Yes.
Andy Steinberg?
Yes.
Jennifer Taub?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Pat DeAngelis?
Aye.
It's unanimous, and it is now 6:50. Please come forward, Ryan. So, Ryan, would you please briefly tell us about this project, and I believe Athena is going to put something up on the, she has put something up on the screen. Thank you.
Yeah, my name is Ryan Morich, representing Eversource on behalf of this poll petition. There's a roundabout going in over there, and currently, one of the pole locations is right in the center. So in order to, you know, keep the power moving on the road right here, we would locate a pole. You can see it up on the far right. We would put a pole right there, and then to support the angle, down here, we have a separate pole that would be across the street from the existing pole where the bank ATM is. We would put a pole there to support the angle, because we have to move everything over. So there's two poles there. One of them is the main line, 45-foot pole, and then there would be a 35-foot pole. That's that support pole on the bottom part of the drawing there.
So I want to start by asking if there are counselors that have questions. I see Counselor Hanke.
Yeah, I know the wires are above ground right now, so moving the one pole makes sense. But if we're redoing the whole roundabout, I guess, looking at this plan, it made me wonder why we're crossing Amity Street and then, I guess it's technically University Drive, south of the roundabout, with overhead wires, instead of just taking those wires below ground at that moved pole, or at the pole above the moved one, putting them below ground, because it seems like it's a stub pole that these are going to. So why wouldn't we at least put the wires for U Drive below the roundabout underground instead of adding a pole? It just makes no sense, since this is a complete redo of an intersection, why we wouldn't be moving wires underground during the redo?
Please proceed, Ryan.
So we looked into that. This is a main line backbone that comes down Amity Street. So Eversource would not want to move those wires underground. Any point where you're overhead to underground for a few spans, it leaves a point of failure for an outage, so that's a main backbone that feeds the rest of the town. We wouldn't want to do that.
Did you have a follow-on question?
Yeah, I do. So it sounds like from your answer, that's the main wires for the one that's being moved, and then the pole that's on the east side, south of the roundabout. But why wouldn't we put, going across the street, to the stub underground? Can that be done underground?
Oh, so that's a supporting guy wire pole. That supports the overhead pole that's on the right side, on the east side of the street right there. It can't be underground. That's a guy wire goes to a stub pole, and then there's another guy wire that comes down to support that one. So it's a supporting pole for the overhead. It can't be underground.
I'll let you contemplate that, and we'll go to Pam Rooney.
Thank you for asking that question. It was my question as well. This is because it's a completely new intersection with underground utilities, I would push very hard to ask for a duct bank that takes all of this, you know, power from Hadley up to Amity Street underground. It is a major entrance to the town at this point, and I think we ought to start cleaning the skyscape up a little bit. Skyscape. Can you explain again why it's so critical that it be overhead and not underground?
We could look into moving the whole street underground, but just for a few spans of underground underneath this intersection, we had a meeting with the engineers, and they said that's not a good thing for Eversource. Reliability reasons, feeding the whole town with the circuit. It just doesn't really make sense to go for a few spans, and to relocate the whole street would be, I couldn't even tell you, a million dollars to go underground, which the town would have to pay for.
Did you have a follow-on, Pam? Do you have a follow-on at this time?
I don't like the answer, but I don't think I have a follow-up question.
I'm getting that feeling. Anna?
Apologies for the broken record. I don't see a scenario where Eversource is ever going to do the whole street, right? Like you said, the town isn't in a position to shell out all of that money to do. However, when we replace poles and when we put in new poles and lines and all of that, that is our opportunity to have them put underground, and if we want things to start shifting, we have to start saying, this is what we are wanting. I understand what you're saying in terms of it being not a good idea or not what Eversource wants, and certainly, cost-wise, I understand why that wouldn't be what Eversource wants. I would like to hear in the future more details about specifically what it is about certain wires or whatever it's carrying that cannot go underground. I'm having a hard time continually voting for poll petitions when, and this isn't you, to be clear, when we continue to get the answer, it's not what the utility wants to do.
when we continue to get the answer, it's not what the utility wants to do. Ultimately, is it what the town wants to do? For me, one of the issues at play here, it's not, it's not actually about aesthetics for me. For me, it is about, we see continued increasing storms. We see continued trees falling on limbs. There was one in Granby this morning that knocked out a ton of power, right? Like, we see these issues with these bigger storms happening more and more. And burying lines, for me, is a climate resilience strategy. So I am, I am voting no on poll petitions unless I am convinced that this absolutely must be above ground for reasons other than cost.
Thank you. Bob Hegner.
Yeah, I have a question about this and about the, the other, the upcoming petition, whether the neighbors, the butters have been contacted, and whether there's been any objections raised to these.
The butters received notices by mail.
And were there any objections?
I haven't heard from any butters. They were notified of the hearing.
Anna, I'm sorry, would, did you have a follow-on question? Okay, please go ahead.
I did have a comment. I did meet with the Department of Public Works, and I was told that this is kind of a priority to get this done this year. I don't know what the timing is on this intersection. That was also, came into play with the overhead option versus an underground option. After several meetings, this is what, you know, we decided on site, so I just wanted to add that.
David or Amy, perhaps you can clarify. We have a grant for this intersection, is that correct? David?
Sure, Lynn, thanks. As most people know, this, yeah, we did get a almost two million dollar Mass Works grant for this intersection and work along University Drive. You know, unfortunately, we, we don't have our Superintendent of Public Works here with us tonight, who could probably shed more, more light on, on the rationale behind this decision. I, I do know that, you know, through my own meetings with the university and DPW, there have been extensive conversations about this roundabout for months now. We are trying to get some of the work initiated this fall, because we are under a fairly tight Mass Works timeline. So it is true, we want to break ground and, and get the construction going tonight, as the applicant referenced moments ago. I don't have any additional information. Again, I'm not an engineer, so I'm not gonna, I'm gonna stay in my lane this evening, but.
Thank you. Jennifer Taub.
I agree with Anna that climate resilience is paramount, but I also think it's okay to be concerned with aesthetics, as it is a main entry point into town. So while I appreciate, of course, that the butters were notified, it's the entire town's major intersection. So I don't think that we have not heard from the butters means that we can't consider where we are positioned as a council and individually on this petition.
Kathy?
Yes, I, I guess I don't understand why we're at a point there's a rush. I, I was gonna check the record on when we voted on the roundabout. It was multiple months ago. I know it wasn't yet, it wasn't yesterday. So it, it feels like we need a document that explains in terms that we can understand why this just can't be done. It's what Anna was asking about, can it not be done? Because this is an opportunity, if we're tearing up the whole intersection, to start doing what, if you travel around streets in other countries, they routinely put them underground. So it's just that we're still in the old world of having them strung up, up high. So that's, it's just a question. And we're putting in a big new housing complex there, so you would like not to have power outages because of storms. I mean, it's starting to plan for the future. So Lynn, I don't know whether we can postpone the vote, but we don't, we don't have a good document that explains why we can't do it the other way.
We can leave the hearing open. David, do you have your hand up?
Yeah, I was just gonna add, Lynn, I'm actually meeting with, with Guilford and his team and the university on Friday of this week. Paul is away, as you know. I can certainly bring this, the questions that have been asked tonight to Guilford and Jason Skeels on Friday. And perhaps I recommend keeping the, the hearing open and continuing it to your next meeting.
Okay. Athena, do I need to do any special motion to leave it open, or just not do the motion to close?
You can, you can move to continue the hearing to September fifteenth.
Okay, we're going to move. I'm going to move that we continue this hearing until September fifteenth. But before we do that, I want to make sure that we give people who would like to make public comment an opportunity to do so.
Then you can't put the motion on the floor.
Okay. I, I'm not putting the motion on the floor. I'm just mentioning that we can do that, yes, thank you. Are there any people who would like to make public comment? Or ask questions? Okay, seeing none, then I want to make sure that any other questions from the council have been asked. Pam?
I guess I would just clarify. My question to be answered is, is the decision to put overhead lines up as opposed to underground systems, a preference of Eversource or a requirement? An absolute need from Eversource?
Okay.
Because I would, and why? And I would support strongly putting them underground while we have the ground broken up and duct banks can go in. It's a very nice first step.
Counselor Ryan?
So I guess another question would be, how much this will cost? And I think I've just heard that this would fall on the town. So I would like, if we could get an answer to this question, what would it cost us to put this underground, and where would we find the money for it?
Okay. Thank you. I'm still seeing your hand up, Pam? And Counselor Hanke?
Yeah, I think I just want to clarify the cost on the underground is, I think we're just talking about the part of the road that is being ripped up. So not a cost for the entire section of U Drive, but it looks like here it might just be two, maybe three. I don't know where the next poles are on this road, but two or three spans. But wherever the road is being ripped up, a cost for that. And I would like to, if we're gonna get a cost for going underground, what the cost to the town would be for moving these poles and doing the stub guy wire pole too? So basically, what's the cost difference?
So, and you mentioned U Drive, but it does sound like Amity Street also is going to get torn up. So either, any place we're tearing it up, correct? Okay. Jennifer?
So I'm assuming the, this is all happening because of the building that's being built? There is a new building going up on Amity and University?
It's.
But it's, so the, the wiring has nothing to do with wiring going to that new project?
The pole would be in the middle of the street if we didn't move it.
Right, but it's asking, is it related at all?
No.
The cost has nothing to do with that?
No, the roundabout is a separate, is actually a separate project.
There is some relation. There's a pole north of here that I have to install that I'm not petitioning for, because it'll be on private property to support that pole. The only two that I'm petitioning for are these, but it is related. I, I did want to mention that, you know, we do look into these situations case by case, and we had a meeting about this. And, you know, we, we look, we look into all the options. I know that you guys want everything underground. But in this case, that's what we decided. So we don't have a cost estimate now of, of, of an underground, because it, it wasn't an option, so. I'll, I'll ask again if this is possible, and then I can, I can get back to you with a cost estimate.
Thank you. David, did you have your, a comment?
Lynn, I was simply gonna follow up to say that the reason for the pole relocation is based primarily on the configuration of the, of the roundabout, that the intersection shifts to the north and to the west. And so some of it is related to the new building on the corner, but a lot of it is just based on geometry of the new intersection.
I, I wanna, I believe this was inherent in what somebody else said, but it would be the issue of if we cannot put it underground at this point because of cost or for whatever reason, can we at least make sure that the conduits are there so that down the road, we could actually move it to the conduits?
That's fair.
Okay.
I'm putting all these, by the way, Lynn, I'm putting all of these in a, in a quick email, so I will follow up with Guilford and his team.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Pandy, Joe, would you like to make the motion to?
I move to continue the public hearing to September fifteenth, twenty twenty five, at six thirty-five PM.
Shane, seconds. And this is the public hearing specifically as it relates to the placement, relocation and placement of a pole at University Drive and Amity Street. Is there a second? We've had a second? Okay, we're going to move to a vote. This is a mo, motion to postpone. It is not a motion to approve, so that when we get to that agenda item, we will not be voting tonight. So.
Just a point of order question, if I may. We do have also a public forum that night, is that correct?
We do. The time that we have, it, it's all, all that the, we do by setting the time is make sure there's a time certain. It doesn't matter whether we start it later, we just can't start it before that. I think six thirty-five is a good shot, okay? I'm gonna start with Counselor Ette. If you're voting to postpone, you say aye.
Aye.
Counselor Hanke, you still have your hand up. Lynn Griesmer is an aye. Counselor Hanke.
Aye.
Bob Hegner.
Aye.
Counselor Lord.
Aye.
Pam Rooney.
Yes.
Counselor Ryan.
Aye.
Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Andy Steinberg.
Yes.
Jennifer Taub.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Pat DeAngelis.
Aye.
Anna Devlin-Gothier.
Aye.
It's unanimous to postpone. We're going to move on to the second hearing tonight. The second hearing is an Eversource petition for a pole placement at eighty-two Pomeroy Lane. Ryan, do you want to go ahead?
Yes.
Could we see a map out? Thank you.
Eighty, eighty-two Pomeroy has a very narrow frontage. So it's, it's very difficult to get power onto that property for this house. The most reasonable way to do it would be to add a pole on the edge of their property, so they can have their service come off of that pole and, and go to the house. So we would add a, add a pole. There is no trees that need to be trimmed in that, that narrow spot, which is nice. But that's the most reasonable way to, to get them power.
Okay. The floor's open for counselor questions. Counselor Hanke?
So there's, seems to be a pole in front of seventy-four and ninety right now that are really close together. And you're trying to put a pole in the middle of that? That, how far away from the other poles are? And why can't you just take the lines off of one of those other poles that seem to be basically on the property line to go straight back to that flag lot? Why is it not possible to do that?
So the pole that's to the east of eighty-two in front of House ninety already has too, too many risers on it, so we can't add another riser to that pole. We wouldn't be able to, to feed their service from that pole, so that, that one's out. We have a, a requirement on how many service risers we're allowed to put on a pole. And we can't come from that pole. And then the House seventy-four, the pole that's in front of there is, is actually pretty far. The owner of eighty-two would have to get permission to, to come from that pole to go through their private property to their, their property on eighty-two. After speaking with the owner of eighty-two, he thought that wouldn't be possible. So we decided that, you know, adding a pole on eighty-two would guarantee that he would be able to have his power. It, it would be a pole, and then there would be an underground service from that pole to the house on eighty-two.
So you can't do underground service from the pole in front of ninety?
No, there's already too many risers on that. There's pri, there's a primary riser that goes across the street to feed Coach Lane. That's high, high voltage, and we can't have a, another riser on that pole. We're not allowed to do that. The DPU doesn't let us.
Counselor Hanke, did you have a follow-on?
Not at this time.
Okay. Are there other, other questions from the council? Anna?
Could you clarify the, roughly, the distance between the poles? That, once everything's in place as proposed, what would the distance be between those? I apologize, I'm trying to figure it out on the map, but.
No, that's all right. I don't have a distance on here. So I, I couldn't tell you, I'd have to measure it. Yep, sorry.
This picture gives me sort of the visual.
Usually our spans are one hundred and fifty to two hundred feet. So the mid-span pole would be, you know, a hundred feet from either pole, give or take.
Can I ask a follow-up?
Please.
So the owner of the property said they talked to the person on the, their, their neighbor. I don't know the number, sorry. And did the neighbor, was the neighbor aware that those were kind of the two options? Either have another pole or span through their property? And these might be details you don't know. I'm just, I'm, I'm curious if, then, if the neighbor was given a, a choice, whether that might change their, their feelings on it?
So if anybody wants to do an underground service, Eversource doesn't own that service or that wire, so it's up to the, the customer to handle that situation. I'm, I'm not aware of a conversation that happened.
Okay.
I'm just representing the customer from eighty-two.
Yep.
And they told me to, you know, this is how they want to do it.
Okay. Thank you.
Pam?
So it sounds like you also don't know if there was, could have been a conversation with the other neighbor, a little bit farther away, about dropping the line there and putting it underground to eighty-two?
Which one are you referring to, the House seventy-four?
I don't have the numbers in front of me, but it was like seventy-four was the, the other property.
And then that pole right there, to the right of the one I drew in, is in front of House ninety. You can see it's very congested with a primary riser on it, et cetera. There's a lot of stuff on there, so that's why it can't come from that one.
Correct. So I'm talking about the pole on the far left of the picture?
Yep. So I'm, I'm not aware if the, the owner of eighty-two had a conversation with seventy-four. I just was requested to, to go this route. So if, if they want to do that, that's, that's up to them, and they can, they can handle that.
Did you have a follow-on? Pam?
I'm not sure how to phrase it. If, if eighty-two has to pay for, for underground wire from the road, essentially from the road back to the house, the addition of another, I'm guessing forty feet in this picture of wire to take it to the pole in front of number forty, seventy-four, if that was an option that could be discussed? It seems very congested here, not just with the wires that you're talking about on pole for ninety, but it's in general.
You also have to take into account the distance. So the house is being built further back. So the house is being built further back on the property, so anytime you add, um, length to the service, uh, they, they can have voltage drop and not get what they need, and then, you know, they have to make their wire size even larger, which is, which is pretty expensive. So that, you know, this is the most reasonable way, cheapest way to get them and ensure that they have power. You know, the pole's located on their property, uh, on the town take.
Anna, I'm going to go to Anna for the moment. Yeah?
Um, I, sorry. I, I know that this is so, so detailed. So is the driveway going to go basically across from Coach Lane, kind of like between those two? Is that the plan? I'm, I'm trying to figure, it feels like we're running out of space here, so I'm trying to figure out where they're putting the driveway, but I don't know that that's necessarily our business, so I can let it go. I'm just personally kind of perplexed by how they're managing that.
It's tight.
It's such a narrow, it's like a fifty-foot frontage, right? So that's, that's snug.
We, we had a similar one on Henry Road that I petitioned. Um, the, the frontage was very small, and we had to locate a pole across the street, and we just narrowly got the, the primary in there. A similar situation with, with these lots.
Are there any other questions from the council? Are there any comments from the public? If so, please raise your hand. I'm seeing no comments from the public. Any other final comments from the council? Okay, then. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, which, I didn't see a hand. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, yes, please. Jonathan Reel, please enter the room, state your name and where you live, and proceed with your comment.
Um, I'm not sure if you can hear me. Are you able to hear me?
We can.
Okay, my name is Elizabeth Reel. I'm, uh, owner of eighty-two Pomeroy Lane. My husband is Jonathan Reel. I guess our, our biggest concern with this is I don't think that the distance between, uh, the poles is demonstrated, you know, to a, a good extent for you guys, um, as in we were told that we can't even tie in to the neighbors at seventy-two, and it had to go even further down the road, as well as the seventy-two pole is not like forty feet. I, you know, I'm not, I don't measure things for a living, but I give it at least a hundred feet. So I mean, I guess I just wanted to let you guys know that I don't think that the illustration there accurately demonstrates the distance there that we would have to travel, which is very costly, as they had mentioned. And, um, I'm not sure if this means anything, but when we had our driveway plans all approved, um, this was proposed on our driveway plans.
Thank you for your comments.
Sure.
Plans were approved.
I'm sorry.
And the plans were approved, so.
By the town.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, and then we also got a letter, I'm sorry to interrupt, we had also got a letter from the DPW saying that they do highly recommend that we have this pole placed there.
Because. Thank you.
So this is, this is Jonathan Real talking at this point. I'm sorry, we're, we're sharing the screen. So yeah, the DPW, the DPW, um, I'm not sure if you guys have the letter, it wasn't in your meeting packet. So they said that even if we do an underground service, that we would still need a pole, so I'm not sure if you guys can pull that letter up to see for yourself. So it doesn't seem like it really changes too much. Um, of course, I'm not an engineer, but if, if you guys just briefly read through that, you can see what we're talking about.
The letters on our screen at this time, thank you. We're taking a moment to read it. Okay, are there other questions from the audience? And Jonathan and?
Elizabeth.
Elizabeth, thank you for joining us. It's always good to hear from people who are requesting these changes.
Thank you.
Are there any other coun, counselor comments? Okay, seeing none, then I'm going to move to close the hearing on this, which is the pole placement at eighty-two Pomeroy Lane. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Is there any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we're going to move to a vote. Lynn Griesmer is an aye. Counselor Hanke.
Aye.
Bob Hegner.
Aye.
Counselor Lord.
Aye.
Pam Rooney.
Yes.
Counselor Ryan.
Aye.
Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Andy Steinberg.
Yes.
Jennifer Taub.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Pat DeAngelis.
Aye.
Anna Devlin-Gothier.
Aye.
Counselor Ette.
Aye.
It's unanimous, the hearing's closed. And, uh, thank you for joining us, Ryan.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Uh, we're going, before we move on to votes, we're going to move on to general public comment. And if you're in the room, which at this point there is nobody else in the room, I, and if you're on Zoom and you would like to make a public comment, please raise your hand at this time. This is general public comment. I see no hands, so we're going to, we have basically provided the opportunity for general public comment, and we're going to move on. Yes.
I wonder if we could, uh, move forward to the vote on the Pomeroy Lane poll since Elizabeth and Jonathan are here?
Yes, I think that that, thank you, I like that suggestion. We've already done the consent agenda. I'm going to hold off on the borrowing question, which is eight A. Eight B is the one that we have delayed until next time, and so I'm going to move to the motion on eight C. And the motion for eight C is as follows. To approve the petition for joint or identical pole locations to install one jointly owned pole to be labeled one hundred over twenty-four M at eighty-two Pomeroy Lane as indicated on the plan marked two-one-two-zero-six-three-one-eight-dash-eight-zero-three-seven-one-five-three-two. Is there a second?
Second.
Pat can second it, and it's labeled one-ten over twenty-four M, not one-hundred over twenty-four.
I'm, thank you, it's like one-ten over twenty-four M. Okay, and the motion's been made and seconded. Are there any questions or comments? Moving to a vote. Counselor Hanke.
Aye.
Bob Hegner.
Aye.
Counselor Lord.
Aye.
Pam Rooney.
Yes.
Counselor Ryan.
Aye.
Kathy Shane.
Ye, yes.
Andy Steinberg.
Yes.
Jennifer Taub.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Pat DeAngelis.
Aye.
Anna Devlin-Gothier.
Aye.
Counselor Ette.
Aye.
And Lynn Griesmer is an aye, it's unanimous. Thank you very much for joining us, and also to our residents that have just built this new home. So we are going to then move to the agenda item eight A. We have no presentations and we have no proclamations. This is a borrowing authorization request, it, and I'm going to go ahead and ask Kathy from the Finance Committee for the Finance Committee report.
Thank you, Lynn. On behalf of the Finance Committee, you have a report in your packet. Um, it's three pages long, so I will just do a summary. When we discuss the financial order, and this is for seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that would, it's a borrowing authorization. It would be in, uh, the sewer fund. And just so everyone knows, we did get a question, uh, to the council earlier today. It's already been incorporated into the rate, so this wouldn't require another rate increase. There was an anticipation of the study. As Amy briefly summarized earlier tonight, this study will be both of new, potentially new processes as well as new equipment for the wastewater treatment plant. The current equipment came online in nineteen seventy-nine, and some of what it does, both the equipment and the way the process is set up is out of date, and parts of it are in danger of collapse. The DEP, um, requires a very precise set of investigations. One of the questions we asked of why such high costs, and it is, she talked about checking all the boxes, but they're going to review all the processes for permitting and in order for us to be eligible for favorable loan rates from the state revolving fund. In response to, uh, what we were asking about why it's so expensive, and, uh, Director Mauring provided a few examples of what he meant by processes as well as equipment. One was an improved intake system, which is not the one we have now. We'll take out rags, rocks, and other debris before the wastewater reaches the pump station. This will preserve the life of the pumps, and the chlorine system we have and other systems are also antiquator. In talking about very specific processes, and I've had to double-check some of the technical terms when I wrote up the report, because I completely misspelled them, but then I looked them up, uh, there's a potential to save electricity with some of the alternative processes, and they could save on labor time. So that there is an issue of, of how we incorporate all of this. There is going to be, out of this assessment, a, how would we proceed in stages or in pieces, because the whole, replacing the whole system will be very expensive, and there will be recommendations on what to do first, second. That will affect future rates, but we're not going to get the result of this study for two years, so we're talking about, in the meantime, we'll have rates that have to observe the fact that this is the highest user of electricity we've got of major facilities in town. So some of what would be hoped is reduction in electrical use. We asked about solar panels and whether it could offset some of the electric costs, and there's probably not enough space to put the amount of solar, but there might be enough space for some of the buildings, um, not necessarily driving the pumps. But there is also the potential of a technology that takes the, uh, cold and hot in the process itself and feeds it back in to heat and air condition the building, much the way air pumps do. So that is one of the things that will be looked at, is a more efficient. Once we went through a series of questions on why it's so expensive, the committee also noted that we have had relatively low rates. No one thinks of our rates as low, but relatively low rates. And it's not because we've been postponing maintenance, but because we have to do a whole system overhaul. It's not a matter of just small tweaks here and there and replacing a line. This is a lot more complicated than a water processing plant. So there will be, when we get to the facility replacement and process, there will be rate increases in the future. But they're not going to, we're not going to see them soon for the facility itself. What we'll be paying for is the study, and that's already in the rates. And I think that is all I will say. Um, some of the technical discussion I tried to capture in the memo, and I got, I made sure it was reread to make sure I got the terms right. And some of that is available for everyone to read, as is the Zoom. And I don't know whether anyone who was there wants to add anything. I thought it was a very rich discussion that we had on what we're facing as a town, but also what it means to have an antiquated system.
Bob Hegner, you're on the Finance Committee, please proceed. Your vice chair, actually.
Yes, um, I, I I know this is a lot of money, and we're looking at even a greater amount of money down, down the line, but like the Centennial Plant, this is essential. We have to do it. Uh, I don't think we have a choice, and, you know, we have a system that's approaching fifty years of age and was built on a federal grant, I believe, probably. And, um, th, those grants don't exist anymore, so, um, you know, unfortunately, we're sort of, you know, kind of stuck here. We have to do it. I have, I, I was the one who proposed that we approach UMass and the colleges to see whether they might be able to, we might be able to get them to help share some of the cost of redoing the system, because they are big, major users of the system. We can obviously, we can charge them more with rates, but, you know, perhaps it's cheaper for them in the long run to help us, uh, you know, build, build a, a better system. And as Kathy had pointed out, this is really not just replacing what we have. We're talking about looking at upgrading all the technology and making it much more energy efficient and much more, actually, much more efficient for cleaning the, the wastewater than, than our current system. So I, I do think, um, this is a, a worthwhile expenditure, and I think, you know, when it comes down to it, we, we, we really don't have much of a choice.
Are there any other Finance Committee members who would like to make a comment? Then I'm going to ask Amy Rezeki if you would like to make any comment at this time.
Um, I think just two points that I want to hit, and I think Kathy, thank you for the overview that you provided, because I thought that was really comprehensive and great. I like the fact that she was talking about phasing it, you know, one of the things that I think is really important for us, like, I see this as a roadmap. This is going to give us a roadmap for what projects we have to do moving forward, how to group them together in a way that's efficient, and stuff, you know, stuff like that, so it's really going to give us a roadmap that's going to help us also see what, what we need to do, where we're going, be able to project, um, as we're looking at, um, you know, rates moving forward and that sort of thing, in a way that isn't going to allow us to be proactive and not reactive. I feel like a lot of what we're doing right now is very reactive, because we just haven't really looked comprehensively. And then the other thing that Bob was just saying, um, that I think is great is, not only the energy efficiency of kind of looking at things in the future, but also, um, the permit for what we have to achieve in our effluent, that has changed. And so partly even why now is the time to do it, is we were waiting for our most recent, it's called a NIPD's permit, our most recent permit, um, for discharge that defines what our effluent needs to look at. And not knowing what that was going to look like meant that we had to kind of wait until we had that in hand to know, okay, what's the goal for the effluent, and now how can we look at meeting that, which has changed over time, what that effluent could look like. But then also, how do we meet that in a, you know, a, a cost-effective, um, and energy-efficient way? So I just kind of wanted to highlight that those are two of the important aspects to me.
Thank you. Are there questions from counselors? Yes, Counselor Ryan.
So I think there's no question that this needs to be done. It's overdue. And many of the points that have been made are important, and this has to go forward, but I'm still stunned by seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And I'd feel a whole lot better if I had a sense of how you all came to that figure. Could it be six hundred and fifty? Could be four hundred and fifty? I realize there are many moving parts. It's complicated. That's kind of the answer that I kind of got from listening to the FIMCOM discussion, but I didn't really get any sense. There wasn't any presentation about, well, this part costs that much, and this part costs this much, and it comes to seven hundred and fifty thousand. So I really would feel a lot better if, um, Amy or somebody could explain how you got to that number, and on basis of what. Because it's a lot. So that's my concern. We definitely need to do this, we, and it may turn out that it really does cost seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and, but I don't see any evidence for that, just basically it's complicated, and the price tag is seven hundred and fifty. Okay?
Amy, would you like to address the question?
Yeah, I was just, I was calling up to ma, just make sure that I have this accurate, but, um, I mean, we, we asked our consultant to give us a, you know, a cost, given the scope of work, given that this hasn't happened in fifty years, given where our permit is right now, and, you know, given what, you know, needing to meet all those, um, all those requirements, um, so that we're eligible for funding. And that was, that's, that's the, the cost of the scope of work that we got.
Did they provide any further breakout?
I'm, I'm looking at that now. Give, give me a second. If you want to take the next question and I'll, I'll look at this and see if I can tease that out.
George, did you, did you have an additional question?
Well, yeah, I mean, did they break it out? What did it look like? And you know, I mean, I realize these are professionals, they do this for a living, but still, were they satisfied with what they saw? FinCom didn't see it, we haven't seen it, we just see the price tag. So yeah, I'd like to have some sense that, how they broke it out and, and how you thought that it made sense to come up to $750,000.
So I have the same question as George and I, for a little more clarification, we haven't, will we issue an RFP? I mean, will we, is there one company or consultants that do this? I mean, yeah, and it sounds like we've already retained consultants that, so I just, a little more clarification on what the process is to get to actually what the cost will be. And then just because I probably say this for many of our town expenses, following on what Bob said, if we're going to look to the colleges and universities to help us pay for the work that will be done from this study, could they participate in some way in the cost of the study?
Okay. Amy or I'm actually going to also go to Dave Zomack since this is a general bidding question versus not just this specific item. Amy?
Yeah, I'll, I'll try and answer it in the Dave if you want to chime in on this. So first, as you guys were talking, I was just scanning quickly through the scope of work and I don't see it broken down like per task. So perhaps there's that clarity on the backend, it's just not on the document I have in front of me right now. But when it comes to procurement, when you have engineers, it's not a situation where you have to bid it out to three. You can go based on qualifications and find firms that are, you know, that have the standards and have the experience and stuff like that and then contract with them for different work. At least the one that we got the quote from here, it is the consulting firm that we've used for, for wastewater for a while. And it does mean if we were to bring in an outside firm or a firm that was less familiar, I think the price tag would be higher because they wouldn't have as much historical knowledge of the facility. And so, you know, you know, partly, you know, a different firm might bring in some fresh eyes, some fresh ideas that we might have, but it would be at a longer time period and a higher cost. So I, you know, I do kind of want to caution that there's a trade off if, if you do put it out to, if we wanted to kind of just say, we want to put this scope of work out and just for this particular item, get three quotes. But we are, we are complying with public procurement laws with the process that we took. Dave, I don't know if you want to chime in, speak to that part better than I can.
I really, yeah, I haven't, unfortunately, I haven't been involved in this project at all, so I, I would defer to Amy and, and the FinCom for, you know, hearing the presentation from Guilford, I presume, last week. And Paul was involved in that as well, but I apologize, I've not been involved in this process.
Pam?
Thank you. I'm going to first follow up on what was just asked and I, I actually wonder, given the, the amount of this project or this, the scope of this work, that a pre-approved contractor to whom you can go to get proposals, that, that the value of the work seems like it would be more in the hundred or $200,000 range, but not in a $750,000 contract to do this kind of a, a study. And that's, it would be very helpful to double check that in fact, we are following procurement regulations properly. That's a lot of money. My actual question had to do with something that was raised by someone in the audience and that had to do with the, with the scope and the capacity of our system. And I, I just want to double check that whether we are designing for a $7 million gallon per day system versus a three or four or five million gallon a day, that the steps that we have to go through to study are still the same. So the, the actual size of the system is not going to affect the scope of work for this study. So it's just confirming that, that I'm correct in my thinking. And then thirdly, this is just a scoping document for $750,000. Will we get any preliminary designs and preliminary cost estimates as part of that work so that, so that it will be possible to parse out what phases and what pieces can happen?
Amy?
Okay, I'm going to try to, if I missed some of your questions, because I'm trying to remember all your questions in order, but you were just asking about designs or kind of financial, you know, costs associated with stuff. So the end product of this is going to give us kind of evaluations of different alternatives and that does include the cost associated with those. So one of the tasks, they're talking about development of recommended plan, a capital improvement plan and a financial analysis of that. And so that's all part of what we're going to be getting out of this. So that, that was one of your questions.
Great. Does that come with some preliminary designs as part of that?
I don't believe, I don't think beyond, you know, kind of the 10%, like a, and enough of a plan to be able to then like get bid worthy, to then take the next step and get bid worthy design. So it's going to give us enough of a design that we can get cost estimates off of a prelim, like kind of a 10 or 15% design is kind of as far as this will take it. You were asking about capacity and I think Dave said it really well in terms of, you know, we do have to keep in mind that we've got the collection system, which has pinch points and at times that is limiting the capacity of where, say, different buildings or, you know, new construction can happen. That's in the system that brings us to the wastewater treatment plant. And then once it gets to the wastewater treatment plant, there's a capacity of the wastewater treatment plant. And so just because our wastewater treatment plant is designed to handle 7 million, it doesn't mean that necessarily a 700-bed complex can be built anywhere in town because it may be limited by the piping that gets there or the pump stations that send it there. So I do want to say, you know, this is just focused on the wastewater treatment plant and there may be pinch points unrelated to this that limit that. Sorry, I don't, you asked a lot of questions. Is that answering the question or do I have additional?
Pam?
Yeah, I think the, the size, the capacity of the system, I was just double checking that really no matter the size of the, of the system, it doesn't seem like that will affect the price of the, the, the study. The study still has to go through 100 different steps, check off 100 different boxes, whether it's for three gallons or 3,000 gallons.
Yeah, yes.
George?
So I of all people have no desire to delay this. It's been long, long overdue, but, and maybe I'm the only person here that still is troubled by a $750,000 contract that was done by the folks we always work with and nobody else weighed in and we got no other estimates. And I mean, maybe the answer is that that is the right number, but I don't have any evidence to support that. And we didn't go through any kind of competitive process or get anybody else's estimates. And it just seems like a really big number. And I, I would just like some assurance that, that not only is it a really big number, which it is, but it's the right number or close to the right number. Is it possible that when it's all said and done, it'll only be 600,000? Or is basically this the bill that the contractor is saying, if you hire us to do this, it's going to be $750,000? And, and then I would say, well, thank you, but I'm going to go talk to a couple of other people and see what they want for this. But it doesn't seem to have happened. So I don't want this to be delayed, but on the other hand, I'm troubled by this huge amount and so I'm, I've got a problem.
Can I, I want to build on two questions that were asked. One is when we get done with this study, will we at least have sufficient specifications that a equivalent of an architect, for whatever you call them, for wastewater treatment plants, would be able to take those specifications and come up with a design that would then allow us to be able to have the cost of what we would need to do to replace it? So that's my first question. In other, in other words, the product that we get at the end is, are we going to have to go through yet another process to get a design and, and the specifications? Or will this be sufficient for us to then launch directly into whatever we need to do to spend, to design and spend and upgrade this system? Or is there going to be another step after this before we can move to that?
If I'm understanding your question, so this is going to give us, like I said, I think of it as a roadmap. So this is going to give us a roadmap saying, okay, project one that you should do involves, this is the scope and it's going to give enough detail that an engineer can take that, but then they are going to have to, that's not going to give us all of the specification and design drawings for, you know, project number one, project number two, but it's going to give them enough specificity that we know, here's what's included in project number one, you know, here's the scope. So then it goes to final design and then construction. So it's going to lay out the framework enough that they can go final design and then construction.
And my second question is, are there any ways to determine comparables? Clearly we're not the only municipality with an aging, failing system then of our size or even a regional system of our size. And is there any way to determine whether or not this price is comparable to what other municipalities have paid?
That is, that is a great question and it's one that I bet Guilford has looked a little more carefully at and I just was not prepared. I, I am sure that that can be looked into, it's just not research that I necessarily have done to be able to answer that definitively.
Okay, thank you. Kathy?
I think you were partly getting at this Lynn, but are there second opinions on this that we could get locally in terms of, take a look at what's being proposed by the, the group that you said is familiar with our system so that potentially saves us time and energy? I saw one of the things in your memo to us was community engagement. I think the community just wants this done at the least expensive, most efficient price. I mean, fortunately, the plant sits, the community it's nearest to is UMass. But, but is there anyone in the engineering department at UMass, for example, that has expertise in wastewater? So it's, what George, everyone is asking is, you know, is 750 the right number? Is it on the high side? And what would happen for something less, especially if we're doing sole source? I mean, sole source are often the scariest kinds of contracts, right? Because you have nothing to compare it to. So I'm just, I don't know the answer to that, but just to get us to a comfort level that it's an expensive study, but it doesn't need to be this expensive. And we, we didn't get very far on that in the Finance Committee meeting other than to understand that there were a lot of complex processes and some of them are new, meaning people are just incorporating them now and that UMass is considering some of the things is what Guilford told us. UMass is considering some of the things we're looking at for something else and I don't know exactly what pieces those are, but Amy, so we're asking for, is there another way of kind of getting a second opinion on the price tag so it would be up to this amount of money, but we could actually consider getting something less?
I, I think the only thing that I can comment on that, and again, like Guilford was more heavily involved than I was, so I, I, I feel a little unprepared to answer that, but it does seem like there are systems in the region such as, you know, North Hampton or South Hadley that see similar flow and, you know, almost every single wastewater treatment plant was built around the same era because of federal legislation that required us all to start building wastewater treatment plants of this sophistication at a certain time. And so certainly they've, these, these neighboring communities have either just gone through this process, probably in the last five or 10 years, or they're about to go through. And so certainly I'm sure there are benchmarks in other communities that could give us a better comfort level, because I certainly, I, I hear what you guys are saying. So that, that is certainly something, you know, if that's something that the council wants us to do prior to, you know, officially voting this, certainly that's, that's research that we can, that we can do to just kind of look into it a little more and, and understand the, the complexity and, and where we arrive at this cost in compared to other communities.
So before I put a motion on the floor, one possibility is that we delay this to a future meeting, hopefully next meeting, but I would need to find out whether or not we can get the information and whether or not Superintendent Maureen is available for that meeting to also augment the questions that Amy has done her very best to answer. Is thoughts on that one? Bob Hegner?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to add that, Amy, it would be helpful to know whether this is being considered as a T and M or time and materials contract versus a fixed price contract, because that makes a big difference from a, I used to be a contractor, so I know how to bid both, both of them. And usually I would say, recommend to my clients, you really want to do T and M because we're going to build in a lot of profit to, to cover costs, you know, unknowns in a, in a fixed price contract. So T and M might be cheaper in the long run, but so you should, we should know whether or not we're, we're dealing with a T and M versus a fixed price.
I'm hearing that there may be additional questions and that we might want to bring this back at a, at a future, but very, very near future meeting, not delay it because I think we all have sentiment similar to what George has expressed and that is we don't want to delay. We just would like to feel more comfortable that 750,000 is what we have to spend. Are there other questions people want answered if we delay this? Pam?
Would it make a difference in our wording if we said not to exceed 750,000? I mean, it seems that we have done, we've, we've borrowed money for other projects. If there is money left over, it does come back to cash at the, at the end of the year. I'm guessing this is a similar process after two years.
That's a good question. Unfortunately, we don't have one of our finance people available tonight, so I don't know if we can make that modification to a financial order. Maybe somebody else feels more comfortable with answering that. I don't.
The borrowing authorization would be for no more than 750,000. We couldn't borrow more without another authorization from the council.
That's correct. So it's already basically capping it, but I, that's not the question I'm hearing from people. Okay. Jennifer?
But this will be debt, so if we don't spend all the money, we can use this free cash, we're still servicing the debt on, so it would seem we would not, of course, I think we would, you know, borrowing authorization is always up to a certain amount, but if we can borrow less, that would be preferable.
You only borrow as you need it.
Right, so then we'll be borrowing it all at once.
That's correct. Kathy?
That, that is what I was going to say. You know, with the bigger projects, we borrow in pieces. I'm not sure you can borrow one consultant project in pieces or not, but I very much like the idea of finding out what, what did it cost North Hampton to do a study like this? Because my understanding, they're at the, almost the end of it, looking at the big price tag of what it's going to cost to redo the system. So they, they've price tag of what it's going to cost to redo the system, so they, they've gone through the, the pathway that you were talking about, Amy. So if we get a few, and since they're nearly the population size that we are, you know, their system must have at least, I don't know whether it's the same kind of capacity, but getting a little bit of that knowledge would be great. Lynn, I think your question was, could we have it in two weeks, which is when the next...
We're meeting a week from now.
A week from now.
And then we don't meet again, at this point, we're not meeting again until October 3rd.
Yeah, so it's either a week from now or whatever number of weeks that is, October 3rd.
Yep. I just want to make sure I have my date correct. No, October 6th is the next time we meet. George, I'm going to have David speak and then come back to you. David, please.
No, just getting a sense of the, of the council, it sounds like continuing this conversation at the next meeting makes a lot of sense. Amy and I have kind of noted some of the questions. You know, if there are additional questions after this evening, perhaps those could be funneled, you know, this week through me, you know, acting in, in Paul's stead while he's away. Certainly copying Paul would be helpful, and then I could get those to, to Guilford. I know he couldn't be with us tonight, but he's in this week, so we can get those questions to him later this week. So if there are any additional comments or questions, just get them to me, and we'll, between Amy and myself, we'll try to track those down, and then we can work on the continued, you know, making sure Guilford can be with you, all of us, at the next meeting.
On the 15th at 6:30. Thank you. Counselor Ryan?
So whatever amount is borrowed will be paid back, but it's paid back by the ratepayers. And so I can envision very soon having ratepayers ask me about a 750,000 dollar contract, and I just need to be able to explain to them, that's what I'm really looking for. I'm hoping it'll be less than that, but whatever it is, that's what we're really looking to understand, that it's, it is a decent price, and, and we have explained how it got to that figure.
Am I correct that this was already anticipated in the rate increase that we voted this year?
That's, yeah, that's my understanding, was this was discussed during the rate-setting process, and we just kind of forgot the last step of this, you know, this sort of an authorization, but it is included in the rates.
That we've already accepted.
That we already accepted.
Okay. However, if we move to a full renovation replacement or whatever of the new facility, that can be anticipated as increasing rates as well down the road. Okay? I just want to be clear, the, the new rate only covers the study. Okay? So George, that, that answers, I think, a piece of your question, and that's, it's already in the rates. That doesn't mean people are happy with that.
Well, yeah, that's...
It just means it's already in the...
We want to know whether this is a reasonable price, and if it is, then we can explain that to our constituents, but we don't know that, at least I don't, and I'm hoping that we will in a week or so, understand how this went, and then we can explain it, but, yeah.
Thank you. Jennifer, did you have your hand up?
No, I was just going to say that we're, it seems we're not comfortable approving a sole-source contract for 750,000 dollars without having more information.
Right. The questions I heard was the bidding, what do we get for it, and are there comparables? And those are the basic questions, and then we build around that. The meeting's been taped, I'm sure that people who are in response to needing to respond to those questions will listen to the tape as well. Are there any other questions from the council that are different from what we've already discussed? Because we're not going to vote on this tonight. And hopefully, we will be able to bring it back to the council on the 15th. Okay. Thank you. We have one more item under actions. Save the best for last. Heatherstone Road Mini Roundabouts.
Lynn, sorry, point of order?
Yes.
Do we not need to take a motion to continue that this is a public hearing, is it not?
No, as long as we didn't put a motion on the floor, we're fine. Okay, actually, Amy's with us, so I want to see whether we can do this, although I'm thinking people might want to break, is my concern. Can we take a five-minute break and then come back and do item 8B, Heatherstone Road Mini Roundabouts? Okay? Thank you. We are going to reconvene at 8:05. We have a four-minute break. We're going to reconvene, so please turn your videos back on.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Kathy? We're going to get started. Thank you. I believe you. All right. The next item is the Heatherstone Road Mini Roundabouts, and I'm going to call on Andy Steinberg as Chair TSO to start the conversation off. We do have a motion, and we'll see where we go.
Are you going to make the motion, or...?
No, I'm going to ask you to make your report first.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure. So the report that was submitted on August 18th to the council, the August 18th meeting by the committee, really does explain sort of the history and the nature of the recommendation and the nature of what we haven't concluded yet. But I think we actually have more information about that, because there was an additional item in the packet today from Jason, there was Jason Skeels' memorandum to town manager and Paul Bachman about, and Guilford Maureen, and what Jason had reported is valuable additional information, is I think this through, so I'm going to have to be very careful as I go through this, because it is going to fall into several categories. One is, you know, the history and what the committee agreed to and what the committee voted. Then there's a second, this is a discussion that the committee had that was not subject to motion, though there were, everybody present had an opinion on the subject, so that's the second. And then the third is sort of where we are now with the additional information from Mr. Skeels. But basically, I think that everybody recognizes that in 2024, we approved as keepers of the public way, major work to be done on Heatherstone Road, and that there was a concern expressed by Superintendent of Public Works that increasing the quality of the road by both removing a median section in the northern part of the road and rebuilding the road from the section from coming in at, was it Pelham Road to the point where you get to Aubinwood, first intersection with Aubinwood, that's where the work was going on, and the suggestion was to try a whole new approach for us as a town to assure traffic calming, and that was the installation of mini roundabouts. And it's the mini roundabouts that was the question, because it was an untested design for not just Amherst, but when we asked, there were no neighboring communities that had it. It has turned out to cause a lot of problems for some residents and a lot of unhappiness, but there also were some residents who were saying, but we do like the road a lot, and we are concerned about speed on the road. So that led to the unanimous recommendation from the committee, which is the motion that is on the motion sheet, and that is to have a, to suggest that we'd say that we would like to have as keepers of the public ways, the mini roundabouts removed on Heatherstone Road, and that alternatives to this be, be identified and implemented. And the concerns were that the mini roundabouts are unusual. If you've driven on that road, it theoretically has all of the rules that apply to any roundabout, most of which have a much larger size to them. But if you're going to make the left turn, did you go three-quarters of the way around the roundabout? Well, in a mini roundabout, that can be a very tight space. It's impossible for a larger vehicle, and even this, a passenger car, depending upon what the car is, it, it could be a very difficult turn, too. And as a consequence, it tempts people to, if they have a large enough vehicle and they have to, to just drive over the roundabouts, which is in fact what they were designed to do, to allow that to happen, but for a smaller vehicle, to just go left in, in front of the roundabout, essentially going backwards, since you can see straight ahead and there isn't the kind of traffic that exists on a regular roundabout. We found that all very confusing and felt that it was an interesting experiment, but since it had been indicated that it was relatively inexpensive to remove it, that we should go ahead and ask that it be removed, and that was the recommendation that we were, that we're making. On the other hand, we recognized that there were a lot of people who still remain concerned about speeding, and that there are very effective mechanisms that are in place in various parts of town, including Lincoln Cottage Street as examples, with speed humps. And the university has become very enamored with speed humps, and they all serve the same purpose. Wherever they exist, they do slow traffic. The other one is the radar speed sign approach, which exists on Amity Street and Henry Street and some other locations, and that has had some proven effect, too, which is where we came up with the question of alternatives to reduce speed be identified and implemented without specification, and that was what the motion that we were recommending tonight have. Now, the other thing about it was that we did get into a discussion is to whether the mini roundabouts should be removed immediately, even if the alternative methods couldn't be installed right away. And that is the item on which there was not, there was no agreement amongst the committee as a whole. Majority did feel that it was appropriate to go ahead and remove the roundabouts promptly, and, but it was, it was not, there was no motion on that issue. Now, what we've learned since then from the town engineer, Mr. Skeels, is when the price for removal, which was relatively low, as you saw in the memo, he talked about the speed study on that road and some other roads that had been repaved, and provided some information that indicated something that we should talk about, but we really ought to, at least, and this is where I'm going on, on my own, I would like to hear from the police chief about that, too. We get his recommendation on this specific issue, but the reality is that Mr. Skeels also said that he could not, the work couldn't be done during this season, which is pretty much over, and that the work couldn't be done until next year. So I, we haven't met again as a committee since Mr. Skeels provided all of the information that he provided, but I think that it would be consistent with what the committee has decided, and I'm going to invite other members of the committee to speak to this, to say that the motion in and of itself is not, says we should remove the mini roundabouts, there's no disagreement with that, that we recommend that that decision be made, and that we look at other alternatives. And that we look at other alternatives. Mr. Skeels said that it would take some time to do that. But we also know that they wouldn't be removed until the next construction season, which is almost a year from now, you know, probably starts in the, in the spring again. I don't know how quickly they could get to it because it would probably be grouped in with other contracts. So we could, it could be referred back to TSO for further work. Or I think it would be appropriate and consistent with where the committee is, has been in its recommendation to pass the motion as recommended, which is to remove the roundabouts, since it does not recommend time. That it's a statement of a decision to do that. And I think that the committee was unanimous on that point, which is why I suggest it would be appropriate to go forward with it. So with that report, I want to ask the president if there are other members of the committee who would like to speak.
Are there other TSO members who would like to add their comments at this time? Bob Hegner.
Yeah, I, the issue, one of the, one of the major issues, at least in my mind, was the safety of the mini roundabouts because many drivers don't treat them as roundabouts. They treat them as just obstructions in the middle of the road. So if someone is actually making a left turn and following the roundabout, they're in a danger of being hit by an oncoming car because the oncoming car does not, may not recognize that as a roundabout, even though it's signage is a roundabout. It doesn't look like a roundabout. So safety was one of the things that weighed heavily, at least on my mind, in terms of making a recommendation to remove the mini roundabouts. It wasn't so much the speeding.
Jennifer?
Yes, I was not able to be at the last council meeting, so I don't know, was this discussed?
No.
It wasn't discussed, okay, so I don't want to repeat what might have been said. But the context in which the mini roundabouts were installed is members of the Heatherstone Aubinwood community were told that it would be on a trial basis. And if it didn't work, they could be removed. So I do feel like we need to honor that commitment to the community. And based on the public input that we've received in TSO, both in writing, and many people came to our meetings and public hearings, who the residents that we have heard from are really don't, they feel that the street is less safe than it was before. So based on that, that they were promised they could be removed if it didn't work and the feedback that we have received, that is really what largely, you know, motivated me to vote, to recommend to the council that the mini roundabouts be removed. And I've driven down the street, I'm on TSO many times. And it seems that the residents who live there, because they say they, of course, they're going around the roundabouts. They know how to navigate the street. But vehicles that are driving there for the first time often don't. So, I mean, I saw somebody wrote recently and said she was going around the roundabout and a truck was coming and kind of saw what she was doing, seemed not to, and then just went over the roundabout on the wrong side of the street to go around her. So again, there seems to be a real, a dilemma between those who know how to navigate and those who don't. But the residents have, at least that have come to TSO, have universally expressed that they feel less safe than they did before.
Andy, you had to comment.
Yes, I tried to save my own comments about what happened in the committee meeting. And because I was the one who had the disagreement with my colleagues on the committee, which put me in a peculiar place to give the report. So I didn't want to lead with what my concerns were. Though I think that they're less relevant, given Mr. Skeels' indication of timing. But and one other thing that I want to add is the plan always was that the mini roundabouts would be no higher than the normal speed bump. And the larger vehicles, trucks and school buses and PBTA buses that go through there would be able to just go over the roundabout. But I think that as Jennifer indicated, for somebody who's unfamiliar with the roundabout, and they're looking at it, is this like a real roundabout? That's not something you see down at our new roundabout. For example, at Cameroy and DeWes Street, you wouldn't see somebody going over, a truck going over the roundabout. And that's what is happening. And that's part of the reason that it is so confusing. Is it really, it's called a roundabout, but it is really even designed with very different rules in mind. And I don't think that we really understood that, what the impact of that was at the time we made the decision. We did receive, mostly through the district meetings that were organized by the two district counselors, significant, a significant number of people also indicating that they were worried about speeding and that they were pleased that it didn't end up being a speeding problem because of the mini roundabouts. And that, so the concern about speeding was stated. So the people who actually came to committee meetings were pretty much the people who uniformly were speaking in favor of their removal. And my feeling was that, a couple of things. One is that the policy on the public ways, it's currently the existing policy, very specifically states that for this kind of decision, that we should be receiving input from the town engineer and the police chief and the fire chief. And we did get it, get some, but not on the issue that of how, whether we should go without any traffic calming for an extended period of time in order to get them removed. And that I thought it would be important to get some consultation on that subject. And that is also built into the proposal for Transportation and Parking Commission, which we've recommended at TSO to the council and are now waiting for GOL review. So, given all of that information, I took the position that we should be cautious about timing and make sure that we have all of the information before making the decision. As it happens, if we can't remove the roundabouts, we being the town, until the next paving season, then it's kind of a moot point because we do have time to have those consultations. And therefore, the motion as stated really is still the appropriate motion to pass. And that's why I made that statement.
Thank you. Kathy, you have your hand up?
Yes, I do. First, I just want to preface this, what we were told. I, I never thought these were a good idea. The residents asked for speed humps. That's what they asked for. And they got a trial of mini roundabouts. And we were told, easy to remove, easy. And we were also told, not very expensive to put in. Because I asked, you know, this versus speed hump. This, oh, piece of cake. So that's what we were told. If we've made a mistake in terms of they're, they're not working well. And I have driven there and people will also tell you about walking with their dogs on the street, which used to be really easy. There was a median going down the street and you just walked, people walked the street. Now it's scary because the roundabouts, people are not, and this is someone who lives in a juncture where the roundabout is part of her street, you know, where she goes in. So my question, we just got a price tag of removing them. Did you get a price tag of two speed humps? We don't need a big fancy study. We could look at Dana, Lincoln and Cottage, which have speed humps on them. And they, they work. People, people don't drive very fast if they're gonna lose the bottom of their car. And they can be not as steep as the UMass ones, which are truly scary to go over. You really should slow down on those speed humps. But UMass has some gradual ones and people slow down on those, too, whether they're called, they've got humps, bumps, platforms. But if we put in three roundabouts and put in, what is the cost of two speed humps strategically placed? Because we, people don't particularly want to go to nothing. They used to have a road that, as Jason's memo said, it was so pothole full, people didn't drive very fast on it. But it also had a median, so it made it hard to drive fast. I just think we need to honor the fact that this was a trial, easy to fix. That was the commitment. And people asked for something different than they got. They all wanted their road fixed. So at one point, people said, whatever it will take to get my road fixed, I'll do it. You know, you know, if this is the price to be the trial balloon. And I personally do not understand why speed humps are always at the bottom of the heap of anything we think about. Because they, they work on these side streets, the non-through streets, where we're not trying to worry about someone needing to go fast. They work quite well and you don't need very many of them to warn people not to go fast. I don't understand what the opposition to it is, but we've heard it more than once. So I just don't know whether you asked, what would be the cost if we removed them and put a speed hump in right away? Do it simultaneous or, you know, a week later? So that, that's my question, do we know the price tag?
I'm gonna address that in a moment. Anna?
All right, I have several notes, several sets of notes. So when I was reading the TSO report, one of the, I, I was challenged by some of the characterizations. Let me back up, sorry. I also did not support this project from the get-go. My, my doubts at that point were why this project, when there were so many other areas in town that had demonstrated higher need. I, I was confused why this particular project was pushed through in the way it was. In the TSO report, it referenced the quote, "difficulty experienced by bus drivers." I was confused why the bus drivers were functioning differently than the PBTA, fire, other large vehicles. They said, the other large vehicles said they drive over the speed hump. So I'm not sure that it's fair to characterize difficulty experienced by bus drivers as a rationale. And this is a theme. It seems like we need more education around how to navigate these and what these look like and mean in our community. My second concern here, my understanding of the issue with speed humps or speed bumps is with vehicle response times for fire and police, for example, and with concern for people speeding up between them, especially if you only have two. On Lincoln, there are every, there are a lot of them. I, third point. I am not, my question is, is this creating a safety hazard to the point where it should supersede other roads getting paved? That $10,000 could go towards other roads. And if we, is the safety of this road so hindered? Is the safety of this road hindered by those mini roundabouts in a way that it wouldn't be if they were not there, if we spent that money and time to remove them? Or really more than that, if the council insists on immediately putting something else in? I'd like to note that the data is showing us that there wasn't really a speeding issue, unless I'm misinterpreting the data. There didn't seem to be a large speeding issue before those mini roundabouts went in. So once again, I am confused about why this project is prioritized. And I'm concerned with the safety risk, risk of someone speeding on that road without any sort of traffic calming versus someone turning left through the roundabout. How often is that happening? It seems like people are saying that the roundabouts are enabling poor driver behavior. And I'm not convinced that poor driver behavior would be any better without the roundabouts. And Jason said something similar in his report, right, that traffic calming only goes so far. I'd also like to know how and why these were pitched as temporary. I keep hearing this, and genuine question, I'm not saying this wasn't true. But when I looked back at the initial memos and the packets, I couldn't find anything about this being a trial basis. The, in the memos that were presented to the council, the motion was for a permanent change to the public way. So I'd love to know more about what the terms of this trial basis were. Because if that's truly how this was pitched, I didn't see that in our materials. It seems like we're having a lot of issues with people not knowing how to navigate the mini roundabouts. And I'm curious about, is there a need for increased driver education and signage? Ultimately, I don't feel that we have given this project the time and educational effort in order to truly test it. And I do not believe it is a good use of funds to remove it and put something else in just over a year later.
So this is Pat's in my district. And I have stopped counting the number of emails I've received. Let me go back and just point out, prior to the installation or the repair of this road or the replacement of this road, this road in fact had its own speed bumps because it was so dangerous to drive that potholes were just amazing. So we, they came to the council and they said, okay, we're gonna do this road, which normally they wouldn't have to come to us to say, we're gonna do this road. But they came and they said, well, let's try these mini roundabouts. And it was not in their original proposal that they be temporary. They, it was something that came out of a discussion with the council when people said, well, you know, we're not sure about these. So I will tell you that I have spent mornings there, I've spent afternoons there, I've spent middle of the days there. I've driven it, I don't know how many times. I've been invited by any number of constituents to come and watch with them. And the mini roundabouts do have some problems. People drive up to them coming off of Pelham Road and instead of going around the roundabout, they turn left instead of going around. When the school bus comes up, in order for the school bus to turn around, it has to go up the road and go to a driveway and turn around. I've seen them do it. So these have created a problem. My biggest problem is the following. We can remove these mini roundabouts and spend $10,000 doing that. But this road is not on anybody's list for speed bumps in the near future. So it's not like a package deal. It's not like, oh, get rid of our mini roundabouts and at the same time install speed bumps. So I want to make sure that not only this council, but our residents understand that this road isn't on the list for many speed bumps. It's, and if it's on a list, it is way behind a lot of other places that are requesting that. And I specifically made sure I checked that last week with the town manager, who had checked it with Guilford Mooreing. So in my mind, the only vote that we can honestly take at this point is a vote to say, get rid of the roundabouts or not. Because we can't, at this point, say, we're gonna spend whatever money needs to be spent to also make sure that we immediately put in the speed bumps. The other piece I want to point out is that the rest of Heatherstone Road that leads up to where the, we did make these improvements is, like many, many of our roads, it's been patched. And it's, right now, it's in better shape than it will be by the end of winter. But if you ask the residents of Heatherstone or in that immediate area, because it is a through street, there's no question about it. If you ask them, would you take improving the rest of the road over getting rid of or doing speed bumps or whatever else? I don't know what they'd say. This thing's a mess. It has, we've had a district meeting only on this issue. Pat's over here shaking her head. And every time we ring the conversation up, there isn't a consensus. I, and I understand the people who came to TSO, unfortunately, I couldn't be at the meeting, I could watch the tape. They're the people who want to get rid of it. They're the people who want to get rid of it. But then I get other emails from people that say, I don't want to get rid of them. They at least calm people down. So I just have to present to you that I wish we had never installed these things. We raised the question at our meeting, why are we installing this? Is this a good experiment? And it was only because we persisted on that issue that the Superintendent of Public Works said, we can view it as an experiment and remove them after a year. And that's why we're back here. So, Jennifer?
I was going to say how, what you just ended it with. We were, and the residents who came to the several meetings, TSO meetings, they were assured that it was very easy to take out these mini roundabouts. And I'm sorry if the TSO report, that was our oversight, didn't, in our motion, include that. But that's certainly what the residents understood from coming to the TSO meetings.
I'm going to skip, I'm going to skip Andy and go on to Mandy Jo. Councilor Hanke, yeah, I'm sorry.
So I'm not sure why we would be including in this motion a requirement that alternatives to reduce speed be identified and implemented. Particularly when the town engineer gave us three examples. One is, is Heatherstone, but two other examples of roads that were paved around the same time, that are similar, with speeds before and after. And neither of those roads, without traffic calming, saw of any, any real significant increase in speeds. And so what I can take from that is that Heatherstone wouldn't see a significant increase in speed. And therefore, the speeds would remain, for nearly all drivers, approximately at the speed limit. With that, I don't see why we would spend money or tell the town to spend money immediately on traffic calming, that it's unclear that traffic calming is actually needed based on the evidence that we have in front of us.
Andy?
I think the basic thing I want to point out is that in the memo that is July 18, there's a section that says, 2024 council decision. And in there is a quotation from the report the TSO provided at that time on June 3, 2024. And it was reviewed by staff at both town manager and staff at DPW to see if they had comments. But they had made the statement to us, and we did include it in the report. And it said, very point blank in that last sentence, it will be easy to remove if they are determined to not be helpful. So it has been and was part of the history of what we presented at the time. And I think the comment was made that people who were unhappy with the mini roundabouts fixated on that promise. And they were entitled to it because it was clearly stated and it was clearly made in our June 3, 2024 report, which was prior to the vote on the original proposal. So, and with, you know, I, I think that the, the point about whether there's a legitimate concern about the need for any kind of traffic calming is one that there is time to ask. And that's why I made my original suggestion at the beginning, that there are various options referred back to TSO or just go ahead and approve the motion and ask the TSO to consider it before the next construction season begins and go back to the town engineer, the fire chief, and the police chief to, as is directed in the policy on public ways and get some input on it. And that's still what I think is the best alternative, since we know it's going to take time.
So the motion that is on the motion sheet is in accordance with Charter Section 2.14 and Section 3. G of the Town Council Policy Regarding the Control and Regulation of the Public Way, that the mini roundabouts be removed on Heatherstone Road and that alternatives to speed, to reduce speed be identified and implemented. George, your comment?
If we go ahead and approve this this evening, and we also hopefully, between now and the end of our term, create a Transportation and Parking Commission, I assume that this would come before them. So, and they would, again, the hope is that that body would work to create more coherence and consistency and clarity in these kinds of decisions, which right now, as we all know, come willing-nearly and are decided. So there's some hope here that if we do get to TPC, that when this comes back to them, perhaps it can be fit into a larger picture and decisions can be made. But hopefully, it will not be a decision made by TSO. And while the council may, in fact, eventually get to weigh in on it, it would, I hope, would start with TPC. So I would urge my colleagues to proceed with this motion tonight. And nothing's going to change on that roadway until at least this spring and probably later. And at that point, hopefully, before TPC, this could be brought, and they can decide what they want to do or not do.
Councilor Lord, you're also a member of TSO.
Thank you. I really appreciate this conversation tonight. And I'm wondering, contrary to my fellow District 3 councillor, if we don't vote tonight, because I've heard things like, maybe some of the people think it would be safer to keep them. And if they can't take them out this fall anyway, so there doesn't feel like an urgency to me, I'm pretty sure I heard that DPW can't get it to it for a few months at least. I'm not sure. So I don't know if it makes, it would be helpful to go back and ask more of the community. It is $10,000. There won't be other speed bumps, humps for years. You know, knowing that, would you rather keep it? Does it feel more dangerous? So I don't know if we could set out a bigger net to get more input. And I just wanted to lift that up as a possibility. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer?
So I just wanted to ask, in terms of process, if we were to approve this motion, why would it go to the Parking and Transportation Commission?
The only, well, the only reason it would go to them is because if you're going to put speed bumps in a road or do any other alterations of the road, that has to come back. Because in, in whatever way we decide to split with that committee, the responsibilities of the public way.
I, I understand that, but if we vote tonight to remove them, that's a decision.
That's the decision.
That would not go back. I mean, I'm not saying it should or shouldn't, it just wouldn't go to.
It, it would not. No, but any other mod, future modifications to that road, including future speed bumps, would have to come back to either that committee and/or the council, however decision-making is split. I also want to just correct the fact that GOAL has not been able to deal with that whole recommendation for that commission because it didn't finish legal review until recently. So GO is not dragging our feet. Pat?
Thank you. I want to say a couple of things about Heatherstone. It is one of the worst roads at the end of every winter. And so to me, adding, right now, adding speed bumps, which DPW said makes the road harder to clear of snow and ice. I'm afraid that that would have an incredibly negative impact on the potholes and things that are happening because of the kind of wet winters, wet, cold, warm, cold winters that we're having. So I would like to know what, I'd like to be able to have a sense that if we put speed bumps there, that they wouldn't make the road worse after each winter. Well, you're shaking your head, but I don't think you really know, and I don't think I really know. Because it, you know, the, I don't know. I, I'm, I feel like they should stay in, and we should do what Councilor Lord is saying, which is to talk again to residents and to have more input from residents before we decide that we're going to take, take them out. And I hate driving around with them, so I don't like them. And that is an area that I travel through. But I would like to have more input from residents before we go ahead with this. So I would like to postpone a vote on this issue.
Andy?
I'm not going to make any statement about whether we should, what was just recommended. But there is another alternative, and that is to have somebody could choose to amend the motion if the motion is made as stated in the motion sheet, so that it says, and that alternatives to reduce speed be identified and considered as opposed to implemented. And that would give some time to consider it. But I think that the difference is whether you want to not pass anything and postpone decisions on removing the mini roundabouts for the time being. And that's a different matter entirely, and I'm not going to speak to it.
Jennifer?
I think Andy's suggestion for amending the motion, if we decide to vote on it, is a good one. But I would also defer to the district councillors. I mean, I think if you can confer, and I, I know that you will have meetings and discussions with the residents there. So I think, even if we want to have meetings and come back to us, you know, maybe if we can formally ask, I know you've had this, I actually zoomed in to your last district meeting about this. But if you wanted to just meet with, you know, have a meeting with that immediate neighborhood and then report back.
I would like to set that up, yeah.
But I, I'd appreciate, you know, if you could report back to us, that'd be great.
Preferably live.
Anna?
I'm concerned with Andy's recommendation to make the motion to remove this, remove the roundabouts and have the council discuss alternatives because that would bump Heatherstone ahead in consideration for traffic calming measures when there are significant numbers of other roads seeking such measures. And this road has received one attempted solution. Other roads have had no attention paid to them yet. So I agree that we need the Transportation and Parking Commission. I'm really looking forward to being able to discuss it finally at GOAL when it gets to us. But I do not think that taking action on this, taking that action on this is prudent when we, it's once again prioritizing without a system in place to determine need. And I, I can't, I can't get on board with that.
I'm going to go back to something that Councilor Hanke said, and that is that it may be that the only, the only thing we can actually vote on is the first part of the motion, and that's removing the roundabouts. I don't think we are in a position where we can start passing motions that basically say, and do this, or this, or this. So the only question before the council is whether or not we vote to remove the roundabouts. Thoughts on that? Was that what you said, suggested, Councilor Hanke?
I didn't suggest anything. I just made a statement based on the engineers, the town engineers.
Right.
Memo about what I interpreted that memo to be.
All right, I'm open for a motion. Motion could be that we go with a motion on the page. A motion could be that the motion be something alternative to the motion. There's no motion on the floor. And the other one is to refer it back to TSO. Jennifer?
Can there be a, a motion that the District 2 councillors have a meeting and then come back to the council, and then we can decide? Yeah, I guess postpone.
I, I think you could certainly ask us. In meantime, we have not put a motion on the floor, so we're not going to take it up for a motion and vote. Is that what you're suggesting? Kathy?
Yes, I think, well, a couple of observations. The motion could be shorter. It's just to remove the Heatherstone roundabout. So she said, we don't have to say there's an alternative. But to put to the residents, they will be removed and nothing will be put in for a while. Wait, there is no decision on that, and is that preferable? So the one thing I heard from one person, doesn't like the roundabouts, but said, oh, my beautiful road, it took us so long to get it. Don't wreck it. You know, it was like, the, the idea that, that these would be torn out and, and the road would be crummy again. It was, you know, part of the reaction was like, it took so long to get a smooth road. It's safe to.
Right.
So, so I, I think we're trying to say we need, before we vote on this motion, we need to know if the removal means nothing gets put in. Is that what people want to happen?
All right. So what I'm hearing is a suggestion that we delay this to another time. Meantime, Pat, I, I certainly accept the request that District 2 hold another district meeting. Pat has been a courageous and joint councillor with me for many, many years now. Pat? Okay. All right. We'll be back. We've done appointments. We're going to town council appointments. We have had a resignation from a councillor, Rooney, who is going to be serving on the DPW committee, building committee, or we have recommended her name to the town manager. He then has to come back. So that leaves us with a position open on the Jones Library Building Committee. And so the floor is open for nominations or volunteers. And we will follow a procedure similar to the one we have followed for the DPW committee. Pat?
I would like to make a recommendation that George Ryan become the member of the library committee. He's a thoughtful listener who combines what he learns from residents and other stakeholders with his own extensive research and analysis. He's physically prudent. He cares about communicating with residents. And he publishes a regular newsletter and holds numerous meetings with his colleague about what's happening here in Amherst. He would keep the council informed about the library project and support the development of a new library. I recommend him highly and respect him greatly.
Are there other people interested? George, are you willing to accept the nomination?
I am, yes.
Okay, Kathy?
I had asked, but I didn't get an answer, whether Mandy, Councilor Hanke, would be interested in this. So I would be willing to nominate her if she is interested.
Councilor Hanke?
I appreciate the thought and recommendation, but I am not interested and would decline a nomination.
Okay. Are there any other councillors interested in this? Okay, then I'm going to read a motion to recommend the town manager appoint Councilor Ryan to the Jones Library Building Committee. Is there a second?
Second, DeAngelo's.
Are there any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll begin the vote. I'm sorry, Kathy?
I just have a comment. George, I'm sure you will do this in any case, but one, you were on, as I remember, you were on the library building committee. as I remember, you were on the library building committee before you weren't. But one of my concerns has always been the cost of the project. And I had asked whoever went on it to be watching everything and challenging as much as possible. So I'm hoping that you will do that. I mean, I realize we're at the tail end of it, so it's going to be at the margin rather than the whole project. But, but I think that kind of scrutiny is incredibly important to take what became a very expensive project and at least try to avoid it becoming ever more so.
Can I also suggest that we have had a counselor ask that we get an update on fundraising? And it's my understanding that the town manager will be including that in his town manager's report that will be at our next meeting. Okay. George?
So I think the council has made it clear that there's only some amount of money that we are committed to giving, and that's, that's it. And so careful oversight of what's happening and reporting back to the council on where that is on a regular basis is, I think, a basic task of whoever does this. I think the other is to keep the council apprised of how fundraising is going. And so those are the two things that you should expect that I report back on, on a regular basis. I would also say in regards to that, that as you all can see, this project now is proceeding and proceeding in a rapid and, and, you know, I think, very positive way. Use your influence with your constituents and with residents of the town to encourage them in the campaign to fundraise. We're now at the most public phase, which is any kind of contribution, whether it's $5, $50, $100, or whatever, is valuable. So I would ask my colleagues at this point, given all that has transpired, as this building now is being transformed before our eyes, that you make any effort you can to encourage people to participate in the fundraising campaign.
Other, Pat, you have your hand up?
Yeah, I just want to build on what George just said. George, yes, you know, keeping it with, with what the town side is. But there is a contingency, and the less we eat into that, the less the burden on the trust, on the trustees' fund will be. And that's a town concern because that fund is what also supports a draw and that supports the library operating costs. So there's, that piece just needs to be watched. It's not just the 15.75, you know, so just thinking of the two parts of it. And that's where I said you're more at the margin at this point. You know, you're not at the, the big piece. So to the extent that can be watched carefully, that would be great.
The motion's been made. Has, was there a second? Yes, thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we're going to move to a vote. We start with Councilor Lord.
Aye.
Pam Rooney?
Yes.
Councilor Ryan?
Aye.
Kathy Shane?
Yes.
Andy Steinberg?
Yes.
Jennifer Tob?
Yes.
Councilor Walker?
Yes.
Pat DeAngelo's?
Aye.
Anna Devlin-Gotham?
Aye.
Councilor Ette?
Aye.
Lynn Greismer's an aye. Councilor Hanke?
Aye.
Bob Hegner?
Aye.
It's unanimous. We move on to committee and liaison reports. Let me begin with BCG. The town manager and I discussed this the other day. We've determined that we will take a poll to see whether Thursday, November 13th, from 12 to 2, will work for BCG to meet. That is after the anticipated time, presentation of the financial indicators and a point at which we would then ask BCG to fulfill their role in suggesting, providing their input on guidelines to the town manager. Thursday, November 13th, from 12 to 2. Okay? We have not polled for that, but that's the intention. Are there any questions on that? Okay, moving on, CRC, Pam.
Thank you. We have, CRC has met and has voted to approve a request to update Article 15, Section 15.171. This is inclusionary zoning fees in lieu of affordable units. The report on our discussion and vote went to GOL, as did the wording that we settled on. So that went to GOL on September 1. We, I won't give you the details. You can read the report. Also, on June 9, the same day that we, that we got the referral for inclusionary zoning, there was a referral of a second bylaw, and that is accessory uses, Article 5, code, code name for accessory dwelling units. It was sent to both the planning board and to the CRC. The planning board has closed its public hearing. It closed on September 3, and the version that came out of that is dated September 5. And that is what is in our packet, and that is what is going to be posted by Athena, or has been posted. So as everybody is aware, the accessory dwelling unit adoption has to, has to happen to meet state law, mandating the permitting of ADUs with just a building permit. The discussion that the CRC is focused on at the moment is the choice between adopting a version that allows simply the state, the state parameters for an accessory dwelling unit, or to allow in our bylaws both a state unit and a local ADU, which would allow a larger footprint, owner occupancy requirement, occupancy limits, and a special permit process, as well as a smaller state ADU size. That's not exactly clear, but you can read the report yourself. Thank you.
Are there questions? I have one. If we don't, well, we have to go for special legislation if we do any of the modifications. Okay, thank you.
Well, let's clarify. We're not modifying, we're not really modifying what the state is requiring or allowing choices to, to do either the state mandated minimums or a local version that would be closer to what we currently allow.
Thank you. Any other questions at this time? Elementary school building, Kathy?
We, we meet this Friday. We haven't met since the last time the council met. And on Friday, as I reported last time, the, the big issue is playground surface. And so we will be getting a memo on Wednesday, talking about what options we have, and hopefully at least thinking about what our next steps are. And that's the issue. The building is completely on schedule. And I raise contingency on the library just because I'm hoping we bring this home with really good news for the taxpayers, that we brought it in under the original budget estimate by a lot. And that's what it looks like so far.
Okay. Thank you. GOL, Anna?
So GOL has, I will talk about the town manager evaluation in the future agenda items, part of the agenda. But GOL had a great discussion with the members of the charter review committee. I think I shared that with, can't remember if I shared that with you already. And has yet to find the charter review applicant pool sufficient, but thus far has chosen to keep the option open for filling that vacancy. That said, just wanted to carry for, forward a message from the charter review committee, which is that councilors, please, please, please give them any feedback that you have in, I think at this point, they'll take pretty much any form on the charter. So the message, or the method I recommend is take the, take the charter and mark it up. I think, Pat, did I send you a word version? Lynn, I sent you a word version? Yeah, okay. So I think folks, if you don't have the word version of it, email me and I can send it out to you. You can do a track changes. And, you know, things like today, we even saw, I'm not commenting on good or bad, but we are required to hold hearings open for the exact number of minutes that it takes to present on the hearing. Is that a change councilors think might want to be proposed as a shift in the charter? I don't know.
Public forums.
Public forums, I'm sorry. That's an example of feedback that might, that councilors might have that the general public may not always see. So please take a moment, even if you don't get through the whole thing. I think any feedback would be helpful for them, so passing that along. GOL has possibly finally heard back from KP Law on a few things that we were waiting from out of TSO. So we will be discussing the, hopefully discussing the Transportation and Parking Commission charge soon. We've also received, as you heard, some things from CRC. So our agendas are filling up. In addition, we are always open to propose changes to council rules of procedure. And I already talked about the town manager evaluation. I think that's it. And I'll talk more about that in the upcoming agenda items.
And I apologize, I skipped over finance committee. Kathy?
Our next meeting is, I'm going to blank out on the exact date. You just had it on, it's September 16. We're potentially changing the meeting time, and I just have to finish polling committee members. We have started talking about guidelines. And that initial discussion was what questions we'd like to get some answers to, some requests for additional information. We're a little bit hampered by, I'm making an understatement here, by the lack of a finance director, the lack of a comptroller. The assistant treasurer has taken another job in a town as a treasurer. So the finance staff of the town is not at full strength in terms of answering some of the questions. And most of our questions were requests for information. But we started flagging areas of the guidelines where we might want to consider changes. And anyone wants to listen to that, it's the last half of the meeting a week ago. So we didn't reach any conclusions about it. It was an initial discussion. The other item that we opened a discussion on is, are there large commercial properties on the UMass campus where the land is not taxable, but the building is for property tax purposes? Most prominent is the public-private partnership, new, new dorms and apartments. So we've, we're looking toward a legal opinion under what conditions might they be taxable? Because this would not be easy. There may be other areas. This was a, a larger question on, has this happened anywhere in this state or in any other states, particularly with public universities that have gone to this other way of building, where the building is run and owned by a separate entity that is private? So that was, again, a beginning discussion and as part of looking for revenues for the town.
Anna?
Kathy, could I clarify on that last point? Are you talking about seeking out that retroactively on public-private partnerships that already exist? Or would it just be something going forward? What legal opinion are you seeking for that?
Well, first of all, when you just do a simple search that we all do, the, it would be going forward, but on the current buildings because they, we have not looked at what is the contract between the university and the owner? And the nature of that contract would indicate how separate are they? And the land is not taxable, but the, the building on it is. And then, then there's the further question. And so, because this wouldn't be, like, we walk over there and say, we would like to have this money. So it, it, it was an open question rather than a decision. So we just started that discussion.
Kathy, I believe that the, at the finance committee meeting, it was the first part of the meeting where you discussed the guidelines. And the second part is where you discussed the.
That's correct.
Yeah.
That's correct. I'm just, you know, I'm blanking out because we had the wastewater study also, and I'm just on the sequence. But yeah, I can, I can give everyone the specific parts. So what, what we had in front of us, you can look in the packet, we had a word version, and we mainly focused on the executive summary of the guidelines to say, are, do we want to change any of these statements? An example would be, do we want to have a guideline to spend at least a certain amount of money on roads? Make that part of our guidelines as something new in the guidelines was a discussion.
My other, the real reason I raised my hand was both UMass Boston and UMass Lowell have public-private partnership buildings as well. And so you might want to look into how they have explored that.
Thank you. And, and that was the issue. I knew there, something exists. And the question is, did anyone open this question with them? And you're absolutely right, we should be looking at both.
I am sure it's been open, but I don't know the, the resolution.
Yeah.
Yeah. Pam Rooney?
I'm so glad that topic came up. I actually had it for a question for the town manager, coincidentally. Who, who decided that we wouldn't get tax dollars for that building?
The university based on the fact that we don't own, that they own the land.
So, so nobody questioned the university saying, and pushback saying,
No, they did.
Gee, we don't really think, so I'm delighted that that question is. It also occurred to me that we have, they have, there is an auxiliary services with many, 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 many thousands of square feet that serve not education, but the auxiliary services component of the university. I believe we do get tax money. We get state tax for meals there and hotel. But that's another whole realm that just feels like it's begging for exploration.
Pat?
Have a question for Kathy. From what I understand, some of the buildings that are proposed on campus for residences would be mixed-use buildings with commercial shops and gyms and, I don't know what, in the, on the first floor. And that concerns me a great deal because would those businesses be taxed? How would they be taxed? But also that they, those businesses would take business away from our own downtown, and that concerns me a great deal.
That's what we were raising. And when you, at the restaurants or the blue wall, if you buy something there and you're not a student, you do pay a meals tax. But the question is, there, it's basically property tax-free. So the, the building, the enterprise can operate at a lower overall cost because of that. So that's, that is the question we're raising, Pat. And, and I don't have a, we know there, there are two very large apartment dorm that were just built that are big. And so we were looking for not small amounts of money, you know, nickel and dime. There are some rentals, someone else told me there's some rentals by, of lab space and use of UMass by major corporations. And I don't know how much of that is. So it's a, it's a larger question on what might there be there.
Yeah, no, I hear that.
And yes, the competition, especially when the catering off-campus happens, people I've heard, you know, like, you know, it's tough enough that we can't come on campus to be a shop. But then they, when they start going off-campus as well, it's, it's undermining the downtown businesses.
Yep. Right. Bob Hegner?
We, yeah, we did bring up some of the auxiliary services, like the hearing, lab and stuff. And we decided that, first of all, it's probably a small amount of money. But secondly, you get into issues about whether that's really a service or whether it serves an educational purpose. And that just gets really complicated really fast. So I think it'd be a lot harder to argue that those services should be taxed when they might be, in fact, used as training.
Thank you. I'm assuming there is no Jones Library Building Committee report. Okay. Then we're going to move on to TSO. Andy?
Yes, well, since you're exhausted with TSO, I'll be really quick. We had a meeting scheduled, which we have, which was for this week and on the 4th. We had a meeting scheduled, which we have, which was for this week and on the fourth, we can't, or, excuse me, last week and the fourth, we canceled. We are meeting on the 18th. And I think the major topics of discussion on the 18th will be a draft of the public urination bylaw, which was referred. And the second thing is that we really wanted to have a discussion about whether there are additional goals for TSO that we want to address during the remainder of this council term. And I think those are the two major items. George is vice chair, were there any others?
Kathy, you have your hand up.
Yeah, I have a question. When, when the Joint Capital Planning Committee met, we deleted the $500,000 request for a study of the intersection by the Fort River School. And because it seemed both very expensive to just study it. But one of the things we suggested is that we take a hard look at it now to say, what if there are some improvements in the lights? One additional light? Could the road be wa... Are, are you going to look at that at all? Because there's potentially, when we talk about, when we close down the year and we have free cash certified, there might be some money available to consider doing something for those intersections when the school opens. And I just, there were some simple things, not the big things. So I'm not talking about a major study. So Andy, you had thought maybe you'd get Guilford and team back in to say, are there a few simple things that could be done? I mean, one of the intersection lights doesn't have a left and right turn, you know, on moderating it. There was a suggestion of adding a light where the buses are going to come in and out the way, if you go by Big Y. So these aren't redoing the whole roads, they're doing something simple. Simple, meaning there's a price tag to it, but it's not, doesn't require a major engineering study.
We're going to actually get to the issue of what's still on committees in a moment.
Yeah, okay. So that's just, Andy said, you know, in terms of TSO agendas, it would be worth remembering that that never was resolved.
Okay. Liaison reports. Heather.
Wow, I haven't heard that in a while.
I'm sorry. Holla.
President Griesmer and I met with the co-chairs of the CSSJC. We had a really great meeting around how we can better utilize the committee in our efforts to dismantle structural racism and other structural oppression, to be in alignment with why the committee was created. And there will be more coming in the future. Excited about it. Thank you.
And I've been able to get answers to some of the questions they've asked. I just haven't had time to map it out. Anybody else? I have one for the Human Rights Commission. They have, they're in the process, or I believe actually forwarded late this afternoon, their annual report. They've made a request that they bring that report to the council and make a presentation. So I have suggested to them that I will send a copy of that report to members of the council to determine if they would like to see that on a future agenda item. If it's on a future agenda item, it would probably not be until November 3rd. Are there any questions? Dave, as the acting town manager, do you have anything you'd like to comment on?
I know it's late for, for everyone. I think the only quick update I would have is on the track and field project. It's going extremely well. I'm sure you've, you've all followed it in various media posts and social media, but working with Bob Parent and, and the team at Cataldo, things are going extremely well. Weather has been in our favor, obviously dry, clear weather is good for, for construction. I'm sure you've all been by on Mattoon Street. But the base coat of, by two minutes pavement is down. Drainage is moving forward. Light posts, scoreboards, all of that stuff is going up quite well. We had a very fruitful conversation with the Regional School Committee a week or so ago about the budget. We are on budget and on schedule. The conversation with the Regional School Committee focused on the possibility and our recommendation that we move forward to do a couple of things. One would be to move forward and add irrigation, drainage, and sodding the Western Field. So essentially our budget, you recall, we had a, we had a healthy contingency going into this project. And we'd like to sod that field, irrigate it, and also provide adequate drainage for the Western Field closest to Triangle. And the Regional School Committee was very supportive of that. We also determined that the, that the stairs coming down from the upper parking lot near the high school are adequate. They're old, none of us know really how old they are, but they are sorely in need of replacing. And that's about a $50,000 item and we feel like we can, we can absorb that in the budget as well. There's no sense, obviously there will be ADA walkways down to the new track and field, both from Mattoon Street, but also from the upper parking lot. But athletes and, and others will use those stairs. And if you go by there, you can see them and they're pretty pitiful at this point. They've been in there for decades. So the Regional School Committee was very supportive of that. Again, we can do all of those well within budget and still have a healthy contingency for anything that might come up in the future. The discussion right now that we're having, in fact, Amy Rossetti and I are on a call with the schools tomorrow, is the continuing conversation about short-term and long-term maintenance for those new fields. We're also talking about how long, things like practical discussions, how long does the construction fencing stay up? When can we let athletes and coaches on the fields in the spring of '26? All of those things are being discussed now. So we've got a good, we've got a good plan moving forward. I think there are still some unknowns about maintenance, but we're working through those with the schools. So that's the quick update.
Counselor Ryan.
This is all great news. And I think though, the greatest concern I have, and I think others have, and I think Dave probably also shares this, is the long-term maintenance of the fields. And you mentioned that you're in discussion, DPW is involved, obviously the school, the schools are involved. But I can't overstress the importance of us trying to come to some understanding and cooperative arrangement that we can actually maintain, not only these fields, but we're going to have fields at the new Fort River School and we have other fields as well. So it's a challenge for us, it's a budgetary challenge, but also I think it's a challenge of just coordination and conversation. So I'm encouraged to hear that that conversation is happening and I'm looking forward to hearing more about how we're going to approach this, first of all, for these fields, but hopefully we can expand it to our care of all the fields that, that are crucial to our athletic performances.
Thank you. Kathy.
Yeah, I'll echo what George just said, because it's also an agreement, what parts the town, what parts the region? And that's always been under some debate in terms of responsibility for the fields. I have two, one question and then also a comment. At one point, there was a discussion of putting a well in and Guilford-Mooring had suggested well water could be used for irrigation and the well was taken out of the budget. So I'm wondering where that sits, Dave? And the purpose of the various money that was allocated to the project? It seems like a stretch of the definition of track and field to pave a parking lot with the money? So that's why I'm asking about the well, you know, if you would be using it out of the same appropriation, can you really pave? I think the parking lot does need to be paved. And they had it in the regional school capital budget for a while, sitting there as a piece. So I just have, I think it needs to be done, but just to double check, can the funds be used that way? But could they be used if you've got surplus money in contingency? What about well, which would be less expensive than paying for town water?
Sure, happy to answer those. Just on the maintenance issue, I really don't want to sugarcoat that issue. I think it is a crucial and central issue for the next three to five years is how are we, what is the plan for maintaining these new fields? And as, as Counselor Ryan mentioned, the new fields that we will also have at Fort River and, and frankly, even Community Field and the middle school. This is, this is a pretty, pretty significant challenge. And it can't fall all to DPW and it's going to be, it's going to be really challenging and there'll be a dollar, there'll be a dollar amount attached to it. There's gonna, in my estimation, going to need to be new muddies from somewhere to do this. So I don't want to kind of sugarcoat that. In terms of the upper parking lot, I hope, I didn't mention paving it, I guess Kathy, were you, were you, were you asking whether there's funds to pave it? That's not part of this project, to pave the upper parking lot at the regional, at Amherst High School, that never was part of the project. And I think it would be a stretch, given that all of the appropriations were for the track and field. The other things we're talking about, we felt as though they were well within the scope of the project and had actually been talked about at various meetings in the past. What if we have enough money to make Field A, if you will, in the middle of the track, the same quality as the Western Field or vice versa? Make the Western Field the same high quality with irrigation, with drainage, proper drainage, and with sod? And we think we can do that. Regarding the well, my understanding is that the region already has the funds for the well, that that was in a previous capital appropriation. I could be wrong on that, but that's something I've been carrying in my mind because we're, we're designing a system that will initially operate off the town's water system. So we will be able to irrigate both fields via town water, but the, but it's designed so that a well could be connected to one or both fields in the future. And that is a potential cost-saving measure for the region. So my understanding from Mike Gallo and, and the superintendent and staff is that they already have the funding for the well, it just hasn't, we don't have a well yet, but we...
I might have misunderstood. I thought I read someplace that the well was on hold, so maybe you can just, just check it.
Yeah, it came up at one of our recent meetings within the last three to five weeks. So I, I think it was ago, but I will check on that. We have a meeting, as I said, I believe it's tomorrow morning at nine o'clock.
Okay. Are there any other questions of David? Seeing none, I'm going to go on to town, council comments. You have a written report for me. It covers since the last one, which was in mid-July, mid-August, I'm sorry. I wanted to just again remind you that the fiscal, that the Regional Schools Committee and the other school committees are meeting on Tuesday, tomorrow night, at five o'clock in the high school library and by Zoom. You've all been provided with the MARS reports that will be the focus of that meeting. That meeting precedes another meeting of the Regional School Committee. The plan is, although the date has not been set, although I've requested one, is that there would be a follow-up meeting in which both school committees and the four towns would have an opportunity to provide their perspective on the MARS report and perhaps introduce some additional data. Are there any questions on the president's report? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to future agenda items and just be patient because we have a couple of things we have to cover. Anna, please go ahead and talk about what you would like town councilors to do with the draft of the town manager evaluation.
All right, friends. So I wanted to give some context to this before asking anything of you. First, GOL has been working on revamping the town manager evaluations, much as we worked on revamping the goals and the goal-setting process last year. They go together, right? We set the goals and then we evaluate the performance along the goals as well as the job of the town manager every year. That's in our capacity as the essentially supervisors of the town manager. So the evaluation process that you're, that you were sent, and I'm actually not sure it got into the packet, so I'm going to double check that. But the town manager evaluation that you were sent via email by Lynn is a word version of something that would be, that would function as a, like a Google form or a Microsoft form, right? So it wouldn't look exactly like this, but it has three parts. Part one is focused on the job performance. So this is essentially where we as the supervisors are looking at what are, what is the town manager supposed to do in his job? What is he supposed to do as town manager as per the charter? And we broke out each piece of that job description, basically, as the charter defines it. And councilors are going to be asked to provide a rating for the town manager's performance of that specific part of criteria for the prior year. We were sure to add in an option that was, I don't know, not enough information or not able to judge, because some of these things we may not see. You can ask Paul about it, Paul can speak to it in his self-evaluation, but we wanted to give that option. And one of the reasons why in the, in part one and part two, you're going to notice everything is broken out so specifically, is that we were trying to reduce the kind of washing out that tends to happen when 13 people are providing ratings on something that contains multiple aspects. So we used to have goals written in a way that there were lots of different components to them and everybody provided a rating and they all kind of averaged out. So we broke all of this down. I also want to note, every single one of these is a Likert scale question. These are not open response questions. They are one, two, three, four, or NA, right? They're not, tell me why. And I'm going to get to that a little bit at the end, but while it looks very long, it's because I felt the need to put in one, two, three, four after every single point, apparently. Part two is where we get into the action items voted on by the council last year. So this is goal performance. This is the second piece of what we expect Paul to do. I would love, as you read through this, for you to reflect on when we look at every single action item and we look at what we asked him to do in, in one year, in addition to all of the items from the charter that he's supposed to do. Just want us to bear that in mind as we go into the goal-setting process next year. Not next year, too soon. So I did break it out by area, by goal area, but each of the bullet points under section two is one of the action items that we voted for the town manager. For example, let me just, I'm going to pick a random page. Provide training regarding racial equity to the town council. You would go through and you would say, was the goal met or expected progress made? Was the goal partially met or partial progress was made? Was the goal unfinished or was the goal deprioritized by the council? Again, we're not grouping these into just the goal area with that nice description that we gave, because ultimately, at the end of the day, the action items are what achieves that, that description of the goal, right? So you would go through similarly to part one, providing year one, one through three on this one, or NA for each of the goals. And then at the end is where you get to get a bit more verbose. We are trying to cut back a little bit on how verbose we are able to be in these evaluations. The purpose of an evaluation is not to opine about the wonderful things and the frustrations that you might have. The purpose of this evaluation is to say, here's what went well, here's where I want to see improvement. That's really why those action items, it's so crucial that the action items be in action. They, they shouldn't be up for interpretation. We shouldn't be able to look at an action item and say, well, he did it, but he didn't do it the way I wanted him to do it, therefore I'm going to give him a low rating. That would be inappropriate. The question, whether or not you agree with the action item is, was it complete, partially complete, or not complete? When we get to the comments, we're asking folks to share three areas of strength in the town manager's performance over the past year and three areas for improvement that you observed in the town manager's performance after, over the past year. We are asking for 300-word limits on both of these questions. Part of this is because our town council president has to compile our responses into a memo. We know that the memo will never be perfect, a perfect encapsulation of everyone's thoughts, but trying to get us to focus our feedback, our qualitative feedback into three specific, pick three, and, and limiting that length allows the town council president to, one, not over-prioritize one person who might have been much longer in their response than another, and allows for easier organization of that feedback. That's my long explanation. That's my long explanation. Um, and before I open it up to other members of GOL to give any other feedback that I forgot, what I'm going to ask of you is I'd like you to read through this and as if you were clicking it in a form, and I, I do have it as a sample form. I have to see if I'm allowed to send it out, um, or not, but uh, as if you were clicking through it, what would it be like for you as a councillor to do this process? What would it be like for you to look at each of these and say, yes, no, maybe? And then, when it's frustrating, I want, if it's frustrating, I won't say when, if it's frustrating. I want you to ask yourself, is it because the process is frustrating or is it because you don't know the answer to the question, right? So there are some of these where I was getting frustrated saying, I don't know if, if Paul did this. And that's on me to then figure out if Paul did it, uh, as a councillor. It's not necessarily that Paul didn't do it. So go through the process and, um, share feedback on what the experience was like. Um, please share feedback with me directly, uh, what the experience was like, what you would like to see changed and how, if you have recommended changes, um, and what worked well. What GOL is currently working on is the versions of this for, um, well, the discussion is who else gets to provide in, input and how to the, to the town council on the town manager's performance. We are looking back at what data we do get when we seek input from the public, when we seek input from committee chairs, when we seek input from staff. And we're trying to figure out what the best way to get that input is so that it helps inform our, um, our going through this process ourselves. We often see that we get very little feedback because we are sending out a really broad blank question. We basically, to the public, we say, tell us about the town manager, town manager's performance. So we're trying, GOL is currently working on, how do we focus the feedback that we get from the public, uh, committee chairs and, and staff? And how do we make sure that it's helpful to us in filling out our own evaluations? I'm gonna stop there and ask any other members of GOL if there's anything I missed or anything you'd like to add.
We are going to have an opportunity on our agenda on the fifteenth to have a conversation about the evaluation form, but it's very critical that you do a test run or a test look at it before you come to the meeting on the fifteenth. And, uh, Anna will send it back out again tomorrow morning, okay?
Any questions or comments from GOL or anyone else right now?
The other, the other piece that I think that Anna did talk about, and that is that we're really trying to figure out how best to get both staff and public input. And we, if you have any thoughts about that, we'd love to hear them. Jennifer?
Yeah, I just want hats off. This is a huge amount of work and I think it is much. I just, you know, I didn't go through it carefully, but it seems much easier to work with than what we've done in the past, so thank you.
Yeah, and please all go through it carefully, but it's, it's simple in the sense of these action items should be familiar and the pieces of the charter should be familiar. So please go through it, but know that there's nothing added by GOL here other than the one, two, three, four and one, two, three. There's nothing created by GOL, um, in terms of the actual, what you're, what you're providing a rating for. Thank you.
Okay. There are four events that I need you to make sure that if you are interested in them, you put on your calendar. The nine-eleventh remembrance is Thursday, the eleventh, that's this Thursday at nine forty-five at North Station. Uh, the first responders picnic is the next day, the twelfth, at noon at North Square. And I'm still waiting for the chamber to let me know how many volunteers they're looking for to help serve. But, uh, if you are planning to come, we may get, be recruiting you to help serve meals. Next Monday, the fifteenth, at five thirty, we have arranged for a photographer to take a picture of the council. However, in order to do that, we all need you to be here at five thirty. If you can't be, then we don't have a composite picture. And what we're going to do is probably something that looks more like a yearbook, yearbook composite. Because the only other picture we have is the one of us all lined up on the day we were sworn in, in, well, we've talked about photoshopping and everything else, but five thirty at the main entrance to Town Hall on Monday, September fifteenth. Dennis will be there. Uh, and finally, I have sent out a thing about the council table at the block party, a reminder that that is not an election table, that the town cannot support people running for office. My understanding is there will be a separate candidate table. I, I'm not even sure I know where it is, um, and you can bring material and put it there. By the porta potty? Okay.
That's what I was told.
All right, thank you. And you can put.
Clearly by coincidence, I'm sure, but that's where it's gonna be.
Um, and I, I wanna correct one other thing, and that is that the tables, we need to be putting our table up at four thirty. And pretty much the town, excuse me, town tables that are up, we've closed them down sometime around dark, so it'll be around seven thirty. Now, we won't go all the way till nine o'clock. Are there any questions about any of those events? I will send them out separately, I will send them out actually as a composite set of events tomorrow.
Sorry, Lynn, I, did you need us to sign up for times or anything for the council table?
Yeah, I did, I sent that.
I'm sorry, I apologize that I missed that.
But I'm gonna modify it because we're not gonna be there till nine o'clock.
Okay.
Okay. So, and finally, um, we have, yes, Jennifer? Okay. We have a, um, challenge before us, and that's how to smoothly, without driving ourselves nuts, finish off this year. And so in order to start trying to get a grasp on that, Athena and I met last week and in your, I, I sent it to you and I will resend it to you, we'll place it in the packet, was a draft of our meetings and with the following questions. In addition to that, it also included all of the committees and what's still on your plates as to the extent that we could remember and make sure we had it. So the first question is what's missing? The next question is, what and when will the committee complete each item that it plans to finish before this term? And please take into consideration the need for other committees like GOL or Finance to review before bringing the item to the council. At this point, our last council meeting is set for December fifteenth. There's still a half a month left in December. I hate to say that. Please, especially chairs and vice chairs and all councillors, please look at this and make sure that you've sent any additions, changes or whatever to, um, Athena and me and George by September thirtieth, close of business. This is also a good time for you as a committee to start thinking about what you're going to be putting in your carryover reports. Carryover reports are reports that are done at the end of each council. They come to the council, they recommend whether or not an item should be dropped from the council agenda or should be carried over. And, and information is then provided for the next council with regard to the items to be carried over. So it's very ambitious. One thing that we'll need, uh, to help with this crunch is to have committees re, provide reports to, uh, by the Wednesday before each council meeting. Make sure those reports include draft motions and make sure that includes examples of the, are the votes of the committee and also then any other accompanying documents. Councillor Walker?
Uh, thank you, Lynn. I just have a question on the future agenda items document. There is a section towards the bottom that says unscheduled or unassigned upcoming agenda items. And I'm just wondering if you can explain how you anticipate incorporating those or if those would be the things that you envision would be, uh, on a carryover?
Is this under four towns? Or is it under the committees?
It's under, like, under the date January twelfth, twenty twenty-six, but it has a header that says unscheduled and or unassigned upcoming agenda items.
Oh, ignore the date above that, okay? The unscheduled and unassigned upcoming agenda items. Those are everything that is in somebody's, some committee's plate or the town manager and need to either be disposed of before we complete this term or need to be carried over or need to be dropped. So ignore the date and just go to unscheduled and unassigned and then by committee, you'll see everything that supposedly is still with committees.
Okay, thank you.
And if there's any further clarification, please let me know. This is a, obviously a working list. I've already scribbled on the one that we sent out. Councillor Hanke?
I don't think you were referencing the same thing that Councillor Walker was. It's on the end of page ten, I believe, because it's stuff that hasn't been assigned to any committee that's listed there. And so we don't have any say of dropping it or anything that you just referenced of, we decide what to do. No, that's just things that we know might be coming from other places that the council has no control.
That is absolutely correct.
Right? And so we're not doing anything with that in any of our transfer memos.
That's correct. The only ones you're dealing with are either ones that are presently on your plate and under your committees. Okay? Or you're thinking you might still wanna deal with. So I'm sorry for that confusion. Unscheduled and or unassigned upcoming agenda items are presently not in any committee, but we anticipate them coming. Some of them, as you can see, are with the town manager or the assistant town manager. In fact, one of them might take off in there. Uh, and some of them, um, are, um, may, you know, for instance, the Charter Review Committee, my understanding is they're going to be coming and asking for an extension. I, I'm hoping that I receive that request so that we can put it on next, um, meeting's agenda. Because once the council receives the report from the Charter Commission Committee, Review Committee, we have to act in ninety days. So having that arrive and then get split between two councils just doesn't make sense. It probably just needs to go to the next council. Councillor Hanke?
You have tentatively put in for August, uh, October twentieth, free cash and supplemental appropriations?
Yeah.
Uh, two questions on that. Number one, that seems a bit early, given the status of our finance department.
It, it is.
Um, so I'd, I'd love to see an agenda that's, or a plan that has that in a more logical place. And number two, it didn't have any follow-up. Oh, wait, it does, two weeks later on November seventeenth, um, but there'd need to be supplemental appropriations need public forums too, and there's no listing of a public forum for those supplemental appropriations and all. And I personally think, depending on what they look like, you might want more than four weeks, I guess, is technically what's listed there in them.
Let me just mention, it is, as some of you who have been in agenda review meetings, you'll sit there and you'll say, I'm sorry, that's not gonna happen, then it's gonna move up. You're absolutely correct. Free cash and supplemental appropriations, if we get them by November third, I'll be surprised. And the reality is that once we get them, then finance needs enough time and it has to come back and we have to have public forums on them. We may be dealing with that at as late as the fifteenth of December. Other comments? Don't try to do it tonight. You're too tired, okay? Just, but Kathy?
Uh, this is a question. I mean, Mandy raised the one on just timing on budget issues, but on the Charter Review Committee, can they ask for an extension so we can avoid having to make, I, I don't know.
Yes, they can ask for an extension, but they have to get it from us.
Right, I, I just, they just, yeah, cuz I don't know where they are on, since they've missed some other pieces.
Athena?
They can, the committee can ask for an extension from the council, but the council can't extend the deadline of action within ninety days. So the council, the charter says the council must act on the recommendations within ninety days, so.
Right, so, but, and at this point, if they came on October thirty-first, that means this council would have two months to deal with it and the new council would only have thirty days. So it's better at this point for them to consider giving it to us later in our term or at the beginning of the next term.
And, and is that group aware of this?
Yes, they are very aware of it. In fact, I believe they have already voted to ask us for an extension. At the same time, they also had a five or six-hour retreat this weekend and evidently, you know, they're making some serious progress. But if you recall the charge, once they draft their report, they have to go back out to the public. So they still have a couple more rounds to go. Okay. Are there any other questions or comments? Are there other councillor comments or future agenda items? Pat?
So I have councillor comments? Okay, uh, it's about today's paper. The Gazette, um, I read, the opening page has a article called "Bub's Big Adventure Goes International." It's about a starving, wet infant raccoon that was found on a porch and, um, somebody took a picture of it. It went viral and hundreds of people internationally, uh, offered support to help maintain the raccoon and the, uh, Leiden Rehabilitation Center. And that, it was just so heartwarming. It was just a wonderful article to read. And then I went a few more pages into the paper and there was an opinion piece called "The Science of Starvation", which was not heartwarming, which was heart-ripping. And I'd like to read a couple of things from that opinion piece. "Anyone of us of a certain age can never forget the photos and film taken by US soldiers as they entered concentration camps. The emaciated prisoners with the hollow eyes, little more than skin and skeleton. As a Jewish child, it affected me especially deeply. So it is more than a little ironic that the state founded, in part as a reaction to the horror inflicted on the Jewish people, is inflicting this same horror on the Palestinian people. In the later stages of starvation, the body, like a vicious parasite in a sci-fi horror film, actually begins to consume its own muscle. This causes the wasting seen in the terrible pictures of children from Gaza. Death from starvation is equivalent to death in a torture chamber. So what am I asking us to do? We must, as individuals, as residents of Amherst and of the world, speak out against Israel's genocide. We must speak out and support the men, women and children of Palestine who are dying because of Israel's actions. Please contact your legislators, write letters to the UN, the international courts, speak in your religious institutions or community gatherings. Speak out and do not fall for the false narrative that to support starving Palestinian people is anti-Semitic. Please do not fall for that narrative, but help the people of Palestine by speaking out."
Are there any other councillor comments? Jennifer, you had an announcement.
Just that I, Pam and I will be. Just that Pam and I will be having a District Four meeting this Sunday, September 14th, from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. in the community room of the Amherst Police Department. And we sent out notices over the weekend to our constituents, but we just decided late last week to have the meeting because that's just sort of worked for both our schedules. So we're not letting you know late. This is when we.
So that's Sunday, the 14th, okay? Are there any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I'm moved to adjourn, seek a second?
Second.
Then I'm going to move immediately to the roll call. Counselor Lord? Pam Rooney?
Yes.
Counselor Ryan?
Aye.
Kathy Shane?
Yes.
Andy Steinberg?
Yes.
Jennifer Toib?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Patty Angeles?
Aye.
Anna Devlin-Gothier?
Aye.
Counselor Ete?
Aye.
Lynn Greasmer?
Aye.
Counselor Hanke?
Aye.
Bob Haggen?
Yes.